Did you read? Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. This has been a sad week in Milton, this past few days, and we've lost three very valued members of our community, all three of them having family members that are integral parts of our family within the town of Milton. Josephine Grant, the wife of our Fire Chief, Jack Grant, passed away this week sadly. Bill Bulger, the husband of Nancy Bulger, who works in our accounting office, and also Paul Dolan, a longtime cemetery trustee, also passed away. And I know that many people in this community poured out out of respect for all three of these individuals, and I think it would be only fitting tonight that we begin this meeting with a moment of silence on their behalf. Thank you very much. Okay, I'm gonna begin with call award, I'm gonna move to item two, a review and approval of minutes, there's no minute, there are no minutes to approve at this time, and if the edits are... Is that me? No.
Not you.
All right. If edits are received and completed for minute approval, then I don't see any changes to that, so. I'm gonna move to item three, future meeting dates. The Board will meet on June 21st, that will be a joint meeting with the Planning Board, and that will be held here. We'll then meet again in a regular meeting here on June 25th. We are also scheduled for July 9th and July 23rd. So one of the, and I just wanna put this up for discussion quick, because July 9th, I'm out of state, I'm out of state, I think, from the 7th until the 18th in Idaho. But given with the five members, I think we should try and stay on track as much as we can, so I'm fine to have Vice Chair run that meeting, and if there's anything significant, I'm fully confident that the four of you can handle it, so if we're all okay with that, can we just, is everyone all right with sticking to the two July dates?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone have a conflict that they know they're not gonna be here for?
I will not be here for July 23rd.
Okay. So I just wanna make sure the, so we always have a quorum, anyway, that's where we could get into. Okay, so if you can just reflect that, tell me, Emily already knows I'm gonna be away, and if you just let Emily know, that'll be great.
Right, and she knows as well.
Okay. Item four, citizens speak. Do I have, I believe I have someone here? Mr. Collins, please come forward.
My name is Wester.
You can take a seat right over there, and you're on TV, and we gotta get your mic down.
My name is Wester Collins, I live at 533 Harlan Street with my wife Ann. I have been part of the town of Milton for 53 years, and I guess I'm pushing 40 years as a town meeting member, somewhere, getting close at least. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all this evening, and I wanna talk on big picture and make a recommendation that the town of Milton adopt a mission statement. And I have a handout that I would like to go over with everyone very briefly.
Emily, take, Emily, take it from me. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Thank you. Be it an individual like myself, or a family, or a business, or a town, mission is really a very critical part of everyone's lives. And up until this point, I haven't thought of, until now, that we, in the town of Milton, could, I think, benefit greatly by managing to, based on mission. The recommended statement is, "The town of Milton, through its town government, is committed to provide the highest quality level of services for its residents in the most cost-effective manner." The reason I say that is because once you buy into that thinking, all of a sudden clarity comes very plain and clear. Highest standards of good faith and fair dealing, and then management from the top down, not a bottom-up approach develops. Let's look at the town from perhaps a different perspective than what you've heard before here this evening.
Pardon me, Mr. Collins, if I could just interrupt. Would you mind speaking closer to the microphone?
I'm sorry.
Thank you. We can hear you fine here, it's just on television, sometimes the audio is compromised.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's fine, that's fine.
Thank you. On the fiscal side of it, we are equal to the 62nd largest private company in Massachusetts, with our revenue collection of around $105,006 million. And the basic economics that that structure, as we are living within now, has a very, very interesting thought process and changes. The largest private companies in Massachusetts are listed on the second page of my handout. You'll notice number 62 is 105 million, major company. If you go to the basic economics of the town, which I have, through my office, prepared, CBRE's demographic comprehensive report, it's based on a 1.7-mile radius from 525 Canton Avenue. There isn't a single city or town in the United States that has a perfectly circular border, so this 1.7 miles is based on some testing, and ties right in with the size of Milton, 28,000 people, about 15,000 households. And it gives a breakdown, and the advantage of this, is it has the household incomes, average income per household, median household income, per capita incomes. What this shows is that we have a very high average household income, like 114,000 projected to increase to 125,000. But because there are a lot of people that have a lot of money in the town, the average income per household for everyone is only 75,000 in round numbers, growing to 82,000. If you turn to the next page, on basic town economics, basically, for the next five years, the average income is projected to grow at an average of 1.86 percent per year. The proposition two-and-a-half mentality and override suggests that the actual costs in comparison with the ability to pay of our residents is about double that. The CPI, rate of inflation, 2017, 1.9 percent ties right in with the average annual increasing income. And management from the top down to match costs based on one's ability to afford to pay is really a very important and interesting process. Management from the top down sets strategy, it sets direction, and it's driven off the basic mission statement that I presented in the beginning. Now, why do I say this? Because basically, up until now, in the last few years, we have been managing from the bottom up. One example, and I've kind of had a fetish on this, and I admit it, is this whole issue of the $800,000 round number stormwater cost. When, on February 28th, stormwater monitoring was eliminated by executive order of the President of the United States, when that happens, under the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the state assumes stormwater obligations, not towns. For the town to pay for a state obligation, in my opinion, is upside down. Town meeting Article V, as an example, is borrowing $4,670,676 in debt, to, in borrowing it long, on long-term bonds, to invest short. By itself, this is a 21.5 percent increase in debt for a checklist of mostly short-lived items. You do not borrow long to invest short in the business world. The proposed addition to debt which we've heard about, when combining existing debt, is 100 percent of gross income for one year from the town. That is more than three times any business reasonably can afford to carry for debt. We've had before us this whole idea of $60 million of proposed debt for the fire station at DPW Yards. Now, let's talk about the reality of DPW Yards. A DPW Yard is no more than a contractor's yard. $35 million scheduled for, scheduled for the contractor's yard is absurd, because there's no $35 million contractor's yard anywhere in this state. As a matter of fact, I think probably anywhere in this country, it just doesn't happen. The fire stations will cost well below, in my opinion, the 25 million, with a distinct possibility of nominal cost due to donation. And when I say due to donation, that's not, I am, I haven't, can't say anything about it yet, but it's a very strong possibility that the headquarters station will be donated to the town as a gift. Basically, the assigning of existing committees at the bottom to monitor themselves is fraught with internal conflicts, in my opinion. We've heard about $57 million that the architects that built the schools and gave us $30 million cost overrun are suggesting for management. I'm saying that in my own mind, you wanna bring in the professional managers on properties, a Hajar type, a Flatley, I mean, people that run these properties, manage them every day. These are the people that can provide the proper kind of advice to really think from the top down, rather than from the bottom up in the decision-making process. So in conclusion, I believe that an opportunity exists for this town to shift to a business model for the next centuries of Milton's existence. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Do I have anyone else for citizens speak? Lee?
Yes. Good evening, thank you very much. Again, my name is Lee Toma, 58 Aberdeen Road, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Bicycle Advisory Committee. The committee respectfully requests that the town reapply for bicycle-friendly community status. In 2014, the town completed the application and was designated a bronze-level awardee by the national organization, the League of American Bicyclists. The award is good for four years, and it expires this year. The reason that it expires is so that the community is encouraged to reapply and demonstrate that they've made progress over the past four years. And since then, Milton has implemented a lot of improvements, from, for example, new bike lanes, rail trails, educational curriculum, sidewalks and crosswalks, lower speed limits, and soon, the bike-sharing system that this board approved at your previous meeting. So the deadline to apply is August 9th, which is approaching quickly. If the town does not reapply, it will be delisted like Boston was a couple of years ago. The application has no direct costs, but it does require some time and labor to fill out, as the chairman knows. There are about 100 questions in the application. The Bike Committee is already working to answer many of these, but others must be completed by the Public Works, Police, and Planning Department staff, and the application must be managed by a town employee. The questions in the application are meant to help provide town staffers with ways to think about how the town could be better in the future for biking, and similarly, for walking. The result would be better quality of life for residents. The Bike Committee believes that the town, the state, local organizations, and advocates have made enough progress to warrant an upgrade from a bronze-level award to a silver level, and we would like to see the town complete the application in order to recognize and celebrate the achievements that we have collectively made. On behalf of the Bike Committee, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee. Before you leave, I just wanna make note that, I don't know if anyone else here has noticed, that the city of Quincy is inundated in yellow OFOS, and this weekend, yesterday, and I believe Saturday, there were several in Andrews Park at the basketball court, so it appears to be booming, I see them all over the city, they're everywhere all over Quincy, but I've seen them in East Square, they've been, so. Are those gonna be green, correct?
Yes, they will.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I do have that application.
Okay, you have, very good.
That was forwarded by, yeah, Mr. Toma.
Thank you, thank you, Lee. Anyone else for citizens speak? Okay. I wanna move along to item five, which is the approval of one-day liquor license, and we do have Brian Kelly and Lynda Lee Sheridan here from the We Are Milton Committee on Milton Music Festival and Fireworks, which is held Saturday, June 23rd, and Sunday, June 24th, at Hutchinson Field, and I told them they could have 60 seconds. Does anyone know Mr. Kelly? You have to limit him.
That means I don't get to talk, right?
Howdy, y'all!
The floor is yours, thank you for coming, oh, not you two.
We'll fix this, we gotta fix this.
I, I, I fall to peer pressure, you see. So we're really excited to be here.
Just pull the mic, just pull the mic.
I'm Lynda Lee Sheridan, I'm from 57 Clifton Road, Precinct 9.
Brian Kelly, 11 Hope Ave, Precinct 7.
So we are here to talk to you tonight about our annual We Are Milton's Milton Music Fest and Fireworks.
What's the theme?
Oh, it's a little bit country.
And a little bit of rock and roll.
And we're really excited about the options this year. We actually did a poll of community members on Facebook, and, believe it or not, country music was the number-one choice of music. So that's, when we're talking about the music, we're, music fest, we're talking about the Saturday options, because there is a whole Irish festival on Sunday that we'll get to in just a minute.
Celtic Sunday.
Right.
So on Saturday, what do we have, Lynda Lee?
Well, we have a lineup of music, we're on the TV show here, guys, right, you know? We have a whole lineup of music that's really wonderful. We have Copilot, we have the Doc Ellis Band, we have Country Mile, and we have Milton's own Neville Sisters. And of course, the evening, the day's festivities have lots more than just music. The field will be full, you know where Hutchinson Field is, up on Adams Street, looking over the beautiful scenic view of the city of Boston. And Brian, what's, tell us about what's gonna be on the field?
Well, we have on the stage Jackson Blue from Country 102.5, so that's real special. And he's a resident of Milton, so he's excited to be here with us. And on the field, we have a giant slide, I'm not talking about a small slide here. So folks, listen, this is the biggest slide that Milton has ever had, I want you to know that, okay? So you're gonna come up with a slide, and for the little kids, what do we have?
We have lots of fun activities, we have, Clydesdales are gonna be there for them to pet and to visit with. We also have cornhole that will be going on, we have volleyball.
But what's the other thing that all the little kids love?
Oh, the giant sandbox.
Jared Crowley, a resident of town, is building a giant sandbox, and Feeny Brothers is gonna be providing 27 tons of sand. So this is gonna be an incredible thing. The kids loved it last year, it got dark, we thought they'd all abandon it, no, they wouldn't get out of it, so we had to put lights on the sandbox right till 10 o'clock, it was unbelievable.
It was so much fun.
The big hit was the sandbox.
It was. So we're really excited about all of that, and of course, the evening ends with our spectacular fireworks presentation. This year, we're gonna try something a little different, because we've been hearing from families that they wanna start, the kids can't stay up till 10, so.
The young, the young, young.
The little ones. So we're going to do a small fireworks presentation at 9 o'clock, although it will still be lighted out, because we are at the longest days of the year right there.
Don't leave if you really want fireworks, this is just the little fake ones.
So that will be something new that we're trying, and we're really so much looking forward to the fireworks being.
What special food thing we have?
We have Wahlburger's truck, food truck, we have the Montelio's pizza will be there, they'll be cooking the pizzas right on site, we actually have food for everyone.
It's gonna be great. And what about Sunday? What do we call Sunday?
Celtic Sunday, so I have to put my glasses on for that, sorry. But, so the festivities start on Saturday at 5 o'clock and go through till 10 o'clock. On Sunday, they start at 12:30, and we will have a whole day-long, sorry, list of entertainers. We have DJ Sean O'Toole, Colm O'Brien, Aaron's Medley, Feeny and Sons, Kerrig's Fancy, Devery, our own Pauline Wells, the Young Wolf Tone, Straight From Ireland, and Cherry Orchard. We'll also have a trad tent, for those of you who don't know what that is, it's a trad tent stage, is where performers can go throughout the day and just perform, and it's a really welcoming place, it's.
All the selectmen are invited to go in the trad tent, bring your guitar.
And just sing or listen to the music, it's really a great, great time. We also will have beer and wine available on both days, so.
And that's why we're here, we hope you will approve that.
Yes, only, only if you say so.
And that's it, so come on out, and just remember, it's about community, these are the events where you really get to know your neighbors and other members of the community, and it just makes it really nice, and so come out, we have shuttle buses, on Sunday, they'll be parking on the field, so, but not on Saturday, because we need to make room for the fireworks, and so please come out, visit with your neighbors, make new friends, and it'll be an awesome time. Thank you very much.
This is, I just have to say, this is only possible due to the generous sponsorship of Copeland Family Foundation. They are our primary sponsor, and they are the reason that this is even happening. In addition, we do have some local sponsors, so check out our website, wearemilton.org, to get all the information on parking and sponsors, and it's gonna be a beautiful day, it's gonna be a beautiful weekend, only sun allowed.
So we get about 5,000 people over the two days?
Yes.
It's one of the biggest things we have here in the town.
It is. And it actually started when we did our 350th celebration back in 2012, and it, people just enjoyed that community feeling so much, that people rallied and said, you know, we need to keep this feeling going. So we do have lots of extended family that shows up every year to come to this event, but please invite your neighbors and your family, and we hope to see you on the field.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve a one-day liquor license for the We Are Milton Two-Day Music Fest and Fireworks on Saturday, June 23rd, 2018, from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m., and Sunday, June 24th, 2018, from 1:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Governor Hutchinson Field.
One second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder if it would be possible to have the team of Kelly and Sheridan make a presentation at each of our meetings about some community topic?
You can have whatever you want. Okay, so moving on, we have a second, can I have a motion, we have a second one-day liquor license request for the Eustace Estate?
I'll make the motion to approve a one-day liquor, oh, is there a presentation on this, or is?
Oh, is there a presentation on that as well? No?
No. I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for the Eustace Estate at 1424 Canton Avenue, on Saturday, July 28th, 2018, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. for its midsummer masquerade.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, so we're going to go right to seven? Are we missing six here? Mr. Clark? I have item six before you, okay. Sorry. Working going. So, hold on, so I wanna go to items, she has a little control. I'm gonna go to item six, which is a conference and approval with the Historical Commission, Historical Commission Chair Steve O'Donnell, the Milton Yacht Club on the Local Historic District Committee, is that correct? And I.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
My name is Steve O'Donnell, Chair of the Historical Commission. I'm here tonight with Bill Mullin, one of our other members.
Mr. Mullin, you wanna come forward, you wanna come up?
Come on up, Bill. We're here to talk about the Milton Yacht Club building, not the yacht club, but rather the building.
Your Police Chair.
The building is seriously deteriorated, and it was the feeling of the commission, you may already all know about it, but if you don't, and we know it and don't tell you, then what are you doing? One of our members did a, an exterior visual observation tour of the property, and also arranged to have a structural engineer look at the exterior of the building, as well as the interior of the building, and I believe you have that information. We're well aware that it's part of a much bigger plan, working its way through for the Worth Street Milton Village area. But the work that the building needs is so serious, based on the engineer's report, that we don't think it can wait until things straighten out in the village. We haven't asked anybody how much money's involved, we've been told very informally, well into six figures, to stabilize and make the repairs that are needed. We know that in the past, the yacht club lease has provided that they maintain the building. What the building needs is well beyond the capacity, financial or otherwise, of the yacht club to take care of. We would hope that the Board would support an application to name the building to the National Register of Historic Places. When previous boards have been presented with this idea for another location in town, it was summarily rejected. There is no downside to a National Register listing. It does not restrict what can happen to the property, what can be done with the property, but what it does do is it makes the property eligible for grants to restore, to rehabilitate, to preserve the property. So if this building were placed on the National Register, there would be a possibility of getting grants. Forbes House Museum, in at least two, perhaps the last three years, has gotten a grant each year, which has helped them significantly in performing the work that they need. The application has to be made with the consent of the owner.
Which is us.
You. So we just wanted you to be aware of what we knew, and that the building needs significant work, and perhaps a National Register listing would help us to access grants, and yes, they're matching grants, but whatever amount of money has to be spent, perhaps it could be raised in the town, there are, there's enough expertise in the town, contractors and architects and engineers, perhaps would, would give time, perhaps would give money, but we're just afraid to let, to see the building sit there continually deteriorating, water's getting in behind the masonry, the roof is sagging, the gutters are hanging off, you can, I don't have to tell you, you can read it all.
So just a couple questions, so if my memory is, I do have a little Milton Police memory, since I was a second generation, so this, the Police Department of Milton began in 1890, that was the first police station, I don't know if it was there as early as 1890, but I believe the building and the department annals came to the town from Boston, Edison, or was it, or whatever predated Boston?
That was, that was the police station on Central Avenue.
On Central Avenue, okay.
This was the original Milton Police lockup, built in 1884. Prior to that, Milton and Dorchester shared a lockup.
Yes.
At the back of one of the Walter Baker buildings. This was the home of the first organized Milton Police Department.
Is it, is it the oldest town building that we have in town?
It is the oldest town-owned building, yes.
Owned by the town.
Yes, I believe so.
It is the oldest building.
I mean, the Powderhouse, I don't know the age of the Powderhouse crossing town hall. But I would say it's the oldest town-owned building.
The fire station, somebody said the fire station, the old fire station.
I thought the fire station was 1909 or 1908. 1908, yes, so I know that the official date of the incorporation of the Milton Police Department is 1890, because we were 100 years old in 1990, and that was the, that was the date. I'll open it to any questions from any of the members of the Board at this point, I don't think.
Does the Historical Commission have an idea?
Does the Historical Commission have an idea about timeline? How urgent do you, would you say this is?
Well, if you read the structural engineer's report, and he didn't say a whole lot about the inside verbally, he said, "Oh, the inside's another whole ball of wax." But when you look at the bricks literally being pushed out of the facade of the building, both because of water getting behind it, and as the engineer said, of improper caulking and masonry repair over the years, I don't know. He said a few months it would take to do the work.
Right, I did read that, but I didn't know if the suggestion was have it done before the winter, have it done within two years.
Well, the sooner the better, but somebody's got to pay for it.
Is there a timeline or a, on the grant application, like Lee Tomlin, he just spoke about the, there's an application period. Is there such a thing for the National Register?
You would have to be placed on the National Register first before you'd be eligible to apply for the grants, and the National Register process can take many months, maybe a year. Generally, they are written by a grant writer, a professional grant writer. Don't quote me. There is a possibility we could have this building done for free.
Okay.
That's a possibility. The idea's been floated. Certainly, the lockup would be a much easier presentation than the Eustace Estate or the Wakefield Estate, which are the two latest additions to the National Register. So, that's a possibility. The grants, I believe, I believe they're given out in the spring, the state grants, but I, you know.
Okay.
If, if this board would support an application, we can work on the application, but again, as owners of the property, the board has to support the application. And again, there is absolutely no downside.
Okay.
To, it's an honorary recognition of the historical value of the property.
I have a question. Steve, is that something that the Historical Commission could do some of the legwork for and start the process? You know, if we were to support it, you could, Edie or somebody maybe take that on as a project and.
Absolutely.
To bring something to us so that, I mean, other than the planning staff, I'm not sure who would be the right person in terms of the town staff to delegate for that, but if the Historical Commission could help us with that.
Absolutely. If we were confident that you would support the application, then it's worth putting the work into doing it.
And did you, I just want to clarify, did you, when you said earlier that you had made this request before, but it was rejected, was that for this property or a different property?
Different property. Different property, different.
I was just going to say, ask me a different.
Okay. Do you remember what the reason was that something was rejected for the?
The property was the town farm.
That's what it was, yeah.
And the trustees summarily, absolutely not, we're not going to encumber the property in any way.
Okay, that was a unique circumstance.
But it doesn't really encumber the property. And I'm going to skip to my, really quickly, to my third item rather than the second since we just mentioned the town farm. We would hope, now that the Pulte situation is underway, that the trustees would begin to discuss what's going to happen to the buildings on the remaining four acres.
We are.
You are?
We are.
Go ahead.
We have discussed it in the past, but we have to have, it's not on our agenda tonight, we have to meet the trustees for that.
I just, I had intended to use the same argument, if you will, for the remaining buildings of the town farm as the yacht club. If those buildings, if that site was on the National Register, they would be eligible also for grants, as well as if a private individual had the buildings, they'd be eligible for historic preservation tax credits as well. But if you're working on it, that's.
I'm going to ask you one last question before you go, before you leave the fire, the old police station.
Okay.
Is the Chair of the Historical Commission, are you recommending to us, this board, that we should apply for this status on that building?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Again, there is no downside. If it made the National Register, and next year you decided you wanted to bulldoze it, National Register doesn't stand in the way, doesn't do anything.
I think you said.
But it makes you eligible for the grants. All right, the other item.
Before we go on.
Go ahead.
So, you had, you had.
Two quick questions. One is, first is a request, and then the second is a question. If you could forward the application, just so we could see what we're signing up for, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
And number two, do you have a sense, to go back to Melinda's line of questions, do you have a sense of the cost to stabilize the building?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know.
All right, thank you.
I think it's probably a function of the number of hours it would take a professional grant writer to do it. I mean, they end up being a quarter, three-eighths of an inch thick, I mean, because you need to document the history of the property.
No, actually, I meant the cost to renovate the building.
Oh.
To stabilize the building.
A six-figure number was thrown out just off the top of somebody's head.
Okay, so that hasn't been analyzed in any way? Okay.
No, again, the, our commission member did the exterior. She got Craig Barnes from CBI to come down, take a walk, hey, you know, would you, from your perspective, would you tell us? And you have what he did, but no, there's been no discussion of cost. All right, the other, the other item.
Before you go on, Steve, I mean, I think it would be helpful, I agree with Mike that we need to get the application forward, but I think for purposes of trying to ask the Historical Commission to do it, I'd be willing to, and I guess I will, make a motion to support the Historical Commission's request that we consider seeking a National Historic Register status for this property and authorize the, I think it would be the planning staff, others, the planning staff and the Historical Commission to.
Begin the process.
Begin the paperwork and report back to us at a later date. Do you think this summer would work, Steve?
Yeah.
So, by the end, maybe report back to us by the end of the summer.
Sure.
On the next steps.
Point of order, we have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Additional discussion? You can have, go ahead, Katie, anything else?
Nothing else.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions? Do you have any? Mr. Farrington, any, anything at all on this?
I might add, Steve, if you're not aware, the town of Milton does have a dedicated procurement and grant writer on staff, I believe, part-time, is that right, Mike?
More full-time now.
Okay.
Comes July 1st.
It's something that you could begin as early as tomorrow, and you never know what you might find. She's there, she's, you know, she's paid by the town for instances exactly like this. So, we'll move forward on your suggestion, but this is kind of a belt and suspenders approach, you know, it's worth exploring.
Okay, but remember, the listing on the National Register has to come before the grant.
That's right. So, am I, and going back to what Katie had asked, yourselves and the planning staff could begin the process of doing this?
We, well, first you'd want to start the process of getting the National Register listed.
That's what I'm talking about, that's what I'm referring to.
And actually, I do have one follow-up.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think, Richard, you're our representative on the Capitol Committee.
Right.
It would be helpful, I think, if the Capitol Committee got the memo from the architect and the member of the, the two reports that we got regarding the property, and also if we submit a copy to, I think Bill Ritchie should see it also.
I think so too.
And I'd like to, and I'll submit it to the Master Plan Implementation Committee since we are currently working on it at this site, and at least the committee should be aware of it.
I do believe, is Amy the Chair of the Capitol Committee?
She is, co-chair.
So, we'll make sure that that goes.
There may be some, you know, temporary monies that, for emergency-type work that could be appropriated for this.
Especially given what you're saying. The only last question I have, or the last point, and this came up just in discussions that I had with the Full House Trust, just about the, this isn't about the dog, this is about this building, but any work that you want to do on it, you want to do it to restore or to keep it to its initial, or as close to its initial appearance, am I correct?
As close as you can.
Right, as close as you can, correct, okay, okay. Anyone else? Any additional comments? Hearing none others? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, very quickly.
Go ahead.
The third, the last item. We would like your support, we'd like you to appoint a local historic district study committee. I think you have two or three or four pages, very, very brief presentation on local historic districts. It's a, the whole package that the Mass Historical Commission gives you is about 60 pages. It's all available online, it's also available in print. We have National Register historic districts in town. We do not have any local historic districts. Before anybody panics, the two places people think about when they hear local historic district is the island of Niantucket.
Really?
And Beacon Hill, where you almost have to have permission to open and close your windows. We're not talking about that kind of situation at all. We have, I have discussed, we have discussed with the Master Plan Implementation Committee the possibility of a local historic district in the Milton Village area. We're not going to have a local historic district there before the zoning gets in. Mass Historical says, plan on 18 months to get town meeting approval, and it requires a two-thirds vote at town meeting. I have spoken with historical commissions in Amherst, in Duxbury, in Dedham. It's taken them three to four years, or three to four times a town meeting to get it passed before citizens and residents are on board with the process. But you have to start someplace, and one of the comments that was made at the Master Plan Implementation Committee one time was that a local historic district would give people in an area being rezoned some comfort in terms that they would have more control over their properties and the properties in the neighborhood. Historical Commission is certainly concerned about preservation of buildings. We're also concerned about preservation of the character of the neighborhood. A local historic district, depending on how the bylaw is written, would control or advocate for changes to exterior architectural elements on a building visible from the street. And what, what you're trying to prevent is there's somebody coming in and stripping all the architectural elements off a house because they're difficult to maintain. Somebody coming in and finding a historic house and, well, we're going to put artificial siding on it, and we strip all the cornerboards and the coins and the window trim and run the siding right up to the door sash. They move windows, they change window sizes. A local historic district committee would have an opportunity to approve or not approve those kinds of changes. And I'm not going to try to sell the whole process in five minutes, and I don't want to take up a whole lot of your time, but the flow sheet, the flow chart that you have, I believe, outlining the process, and it's fairly lengthy, the first step is for the selectmen to appoint a study committee. The state tells you who they want you to, you can read it all. If you approach the Historical Society, I'm the president, if you approach the Board of Architects, two of our members are architects. I don't even know if we have a Board of Realtors in Milton or not, but one of our members is a realtor. The result, they also suggest that a member of the committee, and all the study committee, be a resident of the area. Well, it just so happens that I know that one of the residents of the Milton Village area, who is an architect, lives there. So, I, you know, I think there's enough opportunities for qualified people, but the first step is to appoint the study committee, and then they have a whole routine that they have to go through before they report back to you and the planning board.
Okay.
So, when you've had an opportunity to review all of this.
You have this, Michael? You have all this?
Okay.
We'll call you back.
It's the beginning of a long process, but you have to start someplace.
I often say, we'll like a library book in this room. When you take a library book out, the back page is a stamp as to when you have to bring it back. So, I view all that time between the time you take the book out and the day it has to be back, which is like our terms here, time to read the book and get it done, and get it read. So, speaking as the chairman behalf, I can say that we're here to get things done, so if you can get that, we will. I know Katie has done a ton of work on the, on the initial NPIC, Master Plan Implementation Committee, work in the village, and so I think they probably want for us to start to look at this as well.
Yeah, if, can I, if I could just comment a little bit on what Steve said. Just a few things. One is, and Steve referenced rezoning, so there's been some, you know, there's a lot of interest, and there's a lot of, there is some confusion, and I, unfortunately, my computer just crashed, but I just wanted to mention, what the committee is looking at is not really rezoning, it's more of an overlay zoning, and just so we, for anyone who's watching, so we don't have any confusion here, I mean, it is zoned as a business district, and that would still remain in place. What the committee is proposing is an overlay zoning to allow for some mixed use. Now, there's a lot of different opinions that have been offered. The Master Plan Committee's gone through a process, but as we, most of us were at the planning board meeting last week, and as we all know from that, the planning board is starting their work, and there's a long process to go through with the planning board, and then ultimately, if you need, and then you'd have to get a two-thirds vote at town meeting in order to put this into place. So, I think there's going to be, so when you said, Steve, that the zoning, the rezoning would probably take place before the historic district could be formed, I'm not entirely sure that's the case. I think it depends on how quickly the planning board does its review, and I think, I think the planning board is going to want to weigh in and give that a fair amount of review. But since this is going to take a fair amount of time, the Master Plan Implementation Committee did vote unanimously to support the Historical Commission making this request to this board, and, I mean, we do have, we do have what Steve gave us, and I don't know whether everyone is ready to vote on this tonight. I was going to offer a motion, but if, if the board wants more time, maybe we should defer it. If we want to decide, it says three to seven members, if we want to decide how big this should be, or whether, what the composition might be, and whether we'd want to reach out and have the Historical Commission maybe give us some ideas, I mean, maybe it makes sense to put this on the next agenda, but I do think this is something we should move forward with fairly quickly, as you said, Richard.
So, based on your comments, which, at least from my perspective, you've spent the most time on this, I'm fine with you making a motion tonight, if the other members are. If not, I would schedule this for the 25th, if that's okay with everyone.
How does everyone else feel? I mean, is there enough information at this point?
I mean, it's pretty laid out, it's pretty, it's not, go ahead.
I mean, no, I was just going to say, I'm comfortable, I'm actually comfortable with the more.
The detailed motion.
The more detailed motion than the, than the, than the less detailed motion that we had in the front page. So, if it's a recommendation from the Historical Commission, if that, if that's their position that the more detailed motion is the way to go, then I'm, I'm comfortable with it and comfortable acting on it tonight.
Linda?
Since it's a study committee, yes, because we'll have a chance to ask some more in-depth questions and really understand.
Tony?
Sure, that's fine.
And it's an opt-in, Steve, you may have touched on that, but anyone who's a homeowner would have the right to opt-in or not opt-in, so it's not mandatory on everybody.
Correct.
Who's in the area. All right, well, in that case.
You just got a chapter done in your book. I'll accept, I'll, a motion?
All right, then I'll move that we established under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40(c), a local historic district study committee consisting of three to seven members, which shall make an investigation and a report on the historic significance of the buildings, structures, features, sites, or surroundings included in the proposed local historic district or districts, as the committee may recommend, and shall submit a final report with its recommendations after a public hearing, together with a map of the proposed district or districts, and a draft of the proposed bylaw to town meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Before I leave, Emily, would you see that each of the board members and Mike gets one of these? This is a 2,000, the 2,000 production of the Historical Commission on Milton History. When you have an hour sometime, sit down, take a look.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again.
Thank you both. Okay, now, item seven. We're going to have a conference with Howard Stein Hudson, Halverson Design, and our planner, Bill Clark, on East Milton Square Deck Landscape Architect Design Concept. Sorry for the confusion, Bridget.
All right.
I'm just trying to keep us in order here.
Yep.
The floor is yours. If you just, we have some new members, so if you could just start by introducing yourselves, that would be great.
Yep, my name is Bridget Myers from Howard Stein Hudson. Yep, my name is Bridget Myers from Howard Stein Hudson, and I've got...
My name is Richard Houghton with Halverson Design Partnership.
And we recently brought Halverson on to assist us with the landscape architecture portion of this project, which has kind of been a long time coming.
Kinda.
Yep, sorry.
Right, Emily? Kinda.
Go ahead. So, just to give kind of a brief update, since last time I was here, which was the end of the year, it was last week in December, I was here in front of the board, we were talking about the deck and kind of coming to some consensus over, not so much design of the deck, but what we were thinking as far as the Adams Street portion, because that had been brought up a lot in the last year, just whether it was going to be converted entirely into parkland, or, you know, there was questions about opening it, and we went back and forth a lot, and we looked at a bunch of different concepts as far as parking, if there was any way we could use that area, and eventually what we came to is that, just to keep with the goals of the project right now, and that, and also just because we could not come up with really design that we thought would work with this layout, and being able, being constrained with just the layout of it, as soon as this gets up, I can show you, but, that we decided that we're going to keep it not open to the public, we're not going to put parking on there right now anyways, but we're not going to preclude anything that could happen in the future. So, we're going to keep that area not, we're not going to turn it into green space, it's going to be, you know, the materials are still, you know, being worked out right now, but, you know, it'll be a hard surface, paved, pavers, and it'd be worked into the, incorporated into the design of the overall park. And it will incorporate aspects from our original design, which included like a shared use path through that area for, you know, pedestrians and bicyclists who want to come down from Adams Street, you know, continuing through that path. So that's where we left off, and then a few months ago, we were able to reallocate some of our existing design funds to bring on Halverson, just to get them on board and kind of give them the update of everything basically that I just said to you, and some ideas that we had heard in the past regarding what the public has said that they'd like to see in this area. And we kind of let them come up with some concepts, and we discussed those concepts with Bill and Michael, got more feedback, and which brought us to the current design concept, which Rich talked about, that I believe was shared with you all previously. So, I think I'm going to hand it over to Rich now.
Thanks, Bridget. So as Bridget mentioned, Halverson has been working with the Howard Stein Hudson team, as well as met with Bill and Mike, who brought us up to speed on some of the goals of the landscape park space, and some of the comments that have been received to date.
So, yeah, that's the, kind of the concept where we left it before we got into the actual park design. So, as you'll see, that area where Adams Street used to run through, we kind of kept those curb lines, and that's just kind of where we left it. We would make it so that you could access this area with maybe maintenance vehicles, emergency vehicles, or, you know, if there was events and you needed to get vehicles up there for that. You know, we haven't figured out the details, but we know we want to make it accessible, but also safe, you know, we'll be incorporating some sort of bollards at either end, just to make sure that no one else can drive through there. So, you know, those bollard locations are just those little dots, that is not the definite place or anything like that, but that's where we left it. So this is kind of what we handed off to Halverson and said, pretty much, you know, the other, the rest of the area has, you know, you know, more possibilities, we want to see what they could come up with.
All right. So, when we looked at the existing conditions, to the right is north, so right on top of Route 93, and roof deck condition, and to the east primarily is the, this is primarily the commercial retail area, and very, very busy with traffic on all four sides of the park. So it's kind of this island that has been underutilized, but is very visible every day by a very large number of people. So, if we go on to the next slide, we could talk a little bit about the conceptual landscape design to date. And so, our understanding is that, that the landscape could function better than its current configuration, and one way to do that would be to provide a single large open space in the center that could be used for Halloween or for Christmas. Currently, there are a couple of events that take place, and so around this public, around this open space, all right, the idea would be to improve the connections and to improve the aesthetic, visible aesthetic to the park. So, on the commercial retail side, would, this concept includes streetscape planters that pull pedestrians off the street a little bit, and have these nodes where there could be elements that, including a clock that Bill had mentioned, is in storage right now, and a custom bike rack, and there are some artifacts that exist on the site, including a historic frog, which is a piece of train track essentially that was shown at the Chicago World's Fair. So would move those elements within the park, and also, as Bridget mentioned, keep this hardscape open space, create a place for a holiday tree, and also create a pavilion space for any sort of speaking events or other activities that could take place and be programmed. Another concern was the fact that there's so much traffic that when people are in the park, there's a concern that, you know, children could be, you know, running out, or it's, one of the, one of the ways that we were mitigating that is by closing off some of the existing paths here, and really having mostly connection on this side, and closing off the backside and using a retaining wall to build up the landscape to, for trees and plantings. There's also a Veterans Memorial here, and we've kept that in the same location, primarily because it's, doesn't appear to be, there doesn't appear to be a better location for that. So for budget reasons, we thought that it may be best to leave that right where it is.
Police and Fire Memorial.
Police and Fire Memorial, excuse me. And that is essentially the concepts that we've incorporated into this plan, based on what Bill had mentioned is important to the community, and utilizing existing artifacts and proposed elements that could be incorporated into the park design.
I think part of this is we're trying to save some of the trees that are out there. You can save the wall that's out there on the outside, you can make it go from the wall where the planters are, make it come back down to a one-level surface that has a small incline so that it prevents kids from being able to run into the street on either of the, either Bryant Ave or Bullevah. It does take and make most of the focus come back towards Granite Ave. We have the ability to take and put in benches in here, we have the bike rack that the McIntyre's have donated to the area, we have the 350th clock, which is still in storage at the DPW, so it gets to get put up. We have all of the crosswalks that are now, they're safety islands, they're, they'll have lights, they will be, they'll be refuge points that they're where they're supposed to be, and they also connect back to other crosswalks on the major streets, whether it's Granite Ave, Bassett, Bullevah, or Bryant Ave. Going from the post office, instead of having to cross over five lanes of traffic, there's a bit of an island there. It takes the streetlight that, right now, is three cars ahead, because it's on the island when you're at the post office, so you see cars go flying through, whether they are taking the slip plane, or they're trying to, they're trying to go south down Bryant Ave. We kind of fixed some of that because we realigned where the lights belong, we realigned the positioning of the crosswalks. I think we increased some of the green space, the greenery that's out there. We're still leaving things like the tree that we could use for Christmas. We're trying to highlight some of the, yes, you're right with the police and fire, but at the same time, there's Korean and Vietnam memorials out there, too. It's, there's a stone out there for Joe Manik. It's being able to take these things, centralize them, and be able to highlight them at the same time.
So you want to move them all over to that section of the deck? Have them all in that section?
That's to be determined, but that is open for discussion, and I think it may be a better place, because now you have more dedicated area, it does get to the flagpole, it now is a very visual spot.
And the pavilion, we kind of came to that idea with what we've heard in the past about, we've heard that the business...
You know, the chamber has been interested in something down there.
They want to donate the, we heard a gazebo, you know, we were thinking maybe a pavilion would be...
I think I sent you one with the town of Pumahtaz, that they sent me.
You did.
I did, I sent you one to Pumahtaz, yeah. I just have one question relative to a prior board, when, this is an item that Katie picked up on, so Adams Street remains Adams Street in this, right?
That's what I'm concerned about, because when I see transportation easement up here, we...
What we would be doing is...
But hang on, let me just finish, because when we talked about, when that idea came up last year, my concern, and I thought others' concern, was that that may not be, an easement may not be sufficient, and what, what we wanted to do is guarantee that whether it's 10 years, 100 years, 50 years from now, that if the town in the future wants to reopen Adams, that there's not going to be any, you know, that there's no grass, there's no trees, there's nothing that's on that property, and there is kind of a tree at the end, so, but my main question is the easement. I'm not sure that an easement is enough, and when we, when the town administrator and I talked with town council last fall, during that conversation, an idea that we came up with was amending the 1993 air rights agreement to specifically give us the right to reopen that, and I'm not sure where that's at, if there's been any follow-up. But if there hasn't, I think we need to take that up, because I am concerned, I mean, someone else will have to answer that question, is an easement enough, or do we need, I thought we needed to amend the air rights agreement in order to guarantee us the right, the town the right to open that road down the road.
I know that we've, we had that discussion, I know that it went back to Mass Highway. Mass Highway was comfortable with the idea of the easement, they saw no problem with that. I do know that there, in the design here, we're talking about having a solid surface, so that it could go back to being a roadway. It's not going to become a grass space. What we were talking about is a, on the edge is a...
It could be a curb that...
Flush curb.
Could be flush, and then modified to be a six-inch curb in the future if need be.
That all sounds fine, it's just it's the easement versus amendment of the 1993 agreement that I'm, that I think we need to do some follow-up on, we need to pursue it.
We weren't removing it to not having it for transportation purposes going across there. It's part of the bike and ped movement area to go across, so that is transportation.
I just want to see something, I'd want to see something writing from Mass Highway to Town Council, he's comfortable with it.
Or an opinion from Town Council to us, because, I mean, Mass Highway can say what they want, we're the town, we want to be sure that we have the right to open that road down the road at any time, or, you know, even if it's 50 years from now, that nothing that gets done now, that's why we don't want to plant any grass on it, and, you know, there is a tree at the end of it, so hopefully that wouldn't interfere with it either, but I think we need that clarified from Town Council.
Just to follow up to Katie's point, so with this design, it would be what, a gated access, is that what you're proposing? For like, so, if someone, if you wanted, like, I know that the chamber has their big Halloween thing, they bring a school bus in there, if you wanted to have an event where you brought a vehicle in or something, if the fire department wanted to have like a, a fire department, they all wanted to bring, you know, anything like that, you could do that.
So there, there are removable bollards and other configurations that we've used in Quincy and other communities that have worked very well.
Which I'm comfortable with all of that, it's the point that was brought up prior to, at a prior board, that I just want to be sure that...
Yes.
We're on terra firma here with this before we start. And just another follow-up, because again, we have new members, there was a lot of discussion in the prior year about keeping the design, keeping the existing, if you could just refresh everyone, am I correct that part of the reason we're going to a clean slate and started to this is that the entire lining has to be, am I right there? We're placing the lining underneath?
Oh, yeah.
You're correct, right?
The deck.
Okay, right for the deck.
Yeah, the waterproofing.
There's a waterproofing lining that exists between the deck and Route 93 underneath that is torn, that has to require total replacement. You may not see it with a naked eye, but it's underneath, which brings you to the whiteboard to where you're back to this design here, that's all. I just, I just wanted so that everyone knew why we're at where you are at tonight. Thank you. Any other?
I have a question for the chair.
Go ahead, absolutely.
So what is the process by which we get some public input into the design? You know, I'm not a design expert, it looks pretty nice, I like the idea of the clock being in that location where it is. The pavilion, you know, this park unfortunately has been more of a passive park, and it's been activated a handful of times a year. That may continue to be the case, or who knows, maybe, maybe there'll be more activity there, but it seems like the design is geared pretty well toward people, pedestrians walking to and from the post office, crossing through the square. I know that the bike safety and the pedestrian access was a big issue we talked about last year, but what would the process be to get, you know, the residents, whether it's residents in the immediate neighborhood, maybe the East Milton Neighborhood Association, or just residents in the town in general who use this area, how are we going to get public input onto the design, into the design?
We could post this, don't you think we could post this up for a couple of weeks and take, as we did prior, and take comment, have a comment period for a couple of weeks? Because I take it that the next step, if we don't do that, that you would bring this forward would be at the 75, or is this, right?
Right.
So, I think that would be, we've done that before, I think it's only prudent, could we, could we get that up on the town's website, just so people could see it and comment on it, maybe give like a two-week period before we get into July, would you be comfortable with that?
Yeah, is that when the 75% design is?
I don't even know when the 75 is, but I know that, I'm pretty sure that I've been watching, the 75 is the next. Do we have a date set for the 75?
We don't, mainly because that final design contract is still with FHWA.
Okay, okay.
So...
Would that be an appropriate time?
As soon as we get that, well, sorry, what?
Would that be an appropriate time for members of the public who have seen it on the website to come in and give their comments at the 75% design?
I think sooner is better.
Yeah, I do, too.
Sooner is better, don't wait till 75. We put this up, if you've got comments, and you're trying to, we can tweak around the edges, there's not a whole lot we can do to do a wholesale change.
I'd be willing to schedule a meeting over in East Milton, maybe at the MAC like we did before, maybe the next two weeks, if that's all right, I mean, Friday night and do it, and before everyone's gone before the Fourth of July, and just let them come in formally and see it, and then comment, would everyone be all right with that? You okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we'll work on a date, and again, I want to get back, the gnawing thing at me is, I really want to know that we're, because I don't want this all to be for naught if it's an issue.
Yeah, I remember that coming up, that what, did something come out of your town council?
No, so if you remember when the last, was it at the 50 we talked, I can't remember, there was a lot of discussion, John Flynn was here, and whether it was at the 50, because we, and myself included, I thought that, you know, maybe we could, you know, the whole thing becomes park, and we learned that if you do make it park, you're in essence giving it up, and it becomes parkland, and then the town would forever be forfeiting its rights to ever reopen if it had to, or the process would be so, it'd be the same process, two-thirds of the legislative, just, so I just want to be sure that an easement, as you... just, so I just want to be sure that an easement, as you've described it, does not cost us to lose our rights, as is the public way Adams Street today. That's, I guess that's the best way I can say it.
Yeah, I mean, I thought on the call that we had with town council that amending the air rights agreement was something that would be a good idea. But I'm not sure that it's, we've done any follow-up on that since then, so we need to, we need to do that.
I haven't heard that part, but I'll bring that up with powers to be.
And maybe you could even have a conversation between John and Mass Highway, just to make sure they're on the, I mean, I, that's, that's, before we go one step further, before we show it, before we schedule it, I really don't want to do anything unless I know the word absolutely firmly.
I hear Cody's, Katie's comment, and I will bring it back to Mass Highway and figure who, who I have to go to get that written out.
Mr. Zulus, give me a hand up.
Yeah, so I understand that this, that the legislature has determined that this rotary is a constitutionally protected park, and that we are limited in what we can do as a result. My question is, and I simply understand that there are, if we want to open the road again some way, or sometime in the future, that we are restricted in how we deal with that road through the park. My question is, are there any options to make that road in the middle of the park more like a park, if we're going to go this route? So that's my first question. Then I have two more quick ones.
I can help them on the, oh, go ahead, I, okay, go ahead.
Well, I think the materiality of the paving material can make a big difference, whether it has a look of a pedestrian paving, even though it's a vehicular rated material there. Do you have anything to add to that?
I know, we, in the past, we've even kind of thrown out, even using different kind of paper materials to designate maybe where, you know, the bike, bicyclists should go versus pedestrians. But I think the biggest feature is that it's all going to be one, the same level. You know, we're going to bring it up, so it'll be the same as the lawn. So, you know, it'll be a continuation of the whole park. It's, you're not going to be stepping down into like a street area, anything like that. So it'll just, you know, it's just the surface. It's, you know, and we can, you know, with the benches, we could place the benches kind of on the perimeter, or other things to kind of keep incorporated, other maybe movable features like that, that, you know, aren't permanent.
We talked about having a stamped surface, so that it looks like it's brick. It can look like it's a different type of pavers. So it wouldn't give you the appearance that it's just a road, a just a sidewalk. It's going to be one that has some, for as much as we have pavers in there now, instead of having pavers that actually lift, they would be pavers that are stamped. And they, they don't lift, they don't, you know, occasionally have to go back and redo the stamping, but that's a whole lot easier than replacing individual pavers.
Pavers have come a long way in 25 years.
And I noticed that at either end of the road section now, there is dirt and gravel and trees. And I guess the view of town council is if we extended that further into the quote-unquote "park," that that would somehow compromise any efforts in the future to reopen it as a street. Is that the, is that the idea?
Right, I think the, kind of the concern is that right now, we were told to consider the park, anything, you know, between the, outside the curb of Adams Street. And that's, that's the area we can't do anything with except for keep as a park. So I think the concern is that if it becomes grassed, that, you know, I mean, in 20 years, someone wants to change something, you know, somebody will be like, no, no, that's part of the park now. Where, you know, we don't know for sure if it would happen that way, if it would be protected that way. But I think it was just keeping it as this...
Our last discussion with Mass Highway was that the piece in the middle would have a permanent easement that allows it to go back to a transportation use.
Mike, just to answer your question, I think town council's view was broader than that. It was that, you know, you need town, you need a town meeting vote, you need other things to accomplish it. But the proposal that we saw last fall converted the whole thing into green space and into a park. And that's what we didn't want. And we wanted to make sure we had, reserved some of the roadway. So I don't remember all the specifics of the conversations, but I think there was more to it than just if you grassed it over, that, but that was a big concern, that it, it was designed at the time under a preliminary concept plan to just be all grass, or all, all park area, not, not, not pavers.
I think the last plan that we had when we were here did not have Old Adams Street coming through the way it does in these images.
No, no.
What it did, it was a single, single...
Like a bike path.
...bike path that kind of looped through. In order to go back and maintain the permanent transportation easement through there, we decided that what we would do is grass to the curb, have a flush curb with a flush surface, so that you go from grass onto a flat surface, onto the grass on the other side, that it's all one level, not raising blades up and down on the lawnmower, it can go straight across.
And it would give you the opportunity to bring vehicles on there if you needed to.
And then two quick questions. One is, does this design get rid of the pylons? Does it get rid of, we have, right now, we have pylons. We have pylons in front of that section. Are we going to get rid of those?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then finally, what, what are we thinking in terms of timing with this? Because this has been, you know, this has been out there for probably six years now. So what do we think in terms of when we can get this completed?
So previously, the ad date was for January, with everything that kind of had gone on at this...
To get every, I'm sorry to interrupt, to get everything done, to be open, to be...
No, no, no. Sorry, to advertise.
I want you to, I want you to take it out and tell me, you know, back from, from when you, when you estimate, is this, is this going to be 2020? Is it going to be 2025? Is it going to be 2019? When, when can we say, okay, when we get up, we're on this road now, and we think we can get it done by X date or X year?
So assuming we have our, like, say we got our design contract, you know, finished today, tomorrow. You know, I think that whole design process through 75, going through 100% PSNE, you know, would be done by probably next spring. And then it would be a matter of when MassDOT would advertise it at that point. I was told, today it got pushed off because we're not, I mean, we're not going to meet that January 5th ad date at this point. But because it's earmark funding, it's a little different than just being on the tip for Mass DOT. Presuming all our costs stay within the earmark funds, I believe they can program that whenever it's ready, because we're not looking for any additional. If we are, you know, since this concept just got completed, we're not going to know the exact cost estimate, probably until the next 75% design, we'll know the full cost estimate with the park. And then we'll really be able to figure out if we're going to be all within our existing earmark funds, or if there's any, you know, additional funds that are needed. But once they advertise it, you know, I think this would be probably one to two construction seasons.
Done.
So that's another year or another two years?
Or you have done.
So we're talking about best case, spring of 2020?
Probably best case.
To be done.
Best case.
To be done.
If we finish it by spring, advertised, probably the following year.
2021.
To be complete?
Probably by the end of that year.
So best case, spring of 2021?
Start construction.
Or to, that would be probably the second part of, second part, probably the end of 2021.
2021, so we're talking end of 2021, best case.
Yes.
So that's more than three years, three and a half years.
I won't accept that one. I'm not going to take that one.
Three and a half years.
I, I just got to follow up on that, because that's, that's concerning, because I just heard that the January 2019 advertising deadline that we were told about last summer as the reason we could not reopen Adams Street, because we needed to meet the January 2019 advertising deadline in order not to lose the earmark, was the main reason we couldn't reopen Adams Street. And now I'm hearing something different, and that's a real concern.
So, and I just want to follow up on what I think I heard, and I'm with my colleague, Ms. Carlin, because I've been here for the 25 and the 50, and I want to get to the 75. You telling me we can't make the January of 19 advertising because we don't have our final design back yet?
We don't have a contract from Federal Highway.
Why? Is that something?
They're dealing, they're dealing with the state component.
Right, so...
Federal one's a different animal. I don't know.
So the contract from Federal Highway is coming back to Mass Highway, or MassDOT, or to the town?
Mass Highway.
Okay, so I'm going to ask you one last question.
I heard the same date you did, so I, I didn't know that we were missing January.
Is this something that, legislatively, we should be pushing our federal representatives to be pushing so that we can make that January? I don't want to miss that January, are you, you agree? I don't want to miss January 19. That's why I say I'm willing to, I want to hear from John and Mass, I want to know for sure where we are on that, if we are. I want to get this meeting, get the East Milton people in here, they've been waiting and waiting for this. I want to let them see this, digest it, comment on it. If they're not, let's move to the 75, and let's, then the 100, and the, and let's be ready to go in January of 19.
And Mr. Chairman, if the Federal, if Federal Highway is the delay here...
I agree.
I mean, former town administrator John Cronin, he's bombarded us all with emails about this project for a number of years. One thing that he has been saying consistently to us in the last year is that, I think it's Mr. McVann, is that the name?
Yes.
At Federal Highway, he's willing to work with us, is waiting to hear from people from the town. I think we need to reopen that level, that channel of communication and try to expedite this, if Mr. McVann is able to help us expedite this at the Federal Highway level. Because that, to hear that we may not make the advertising deadline...
I agree.
...is extremely concerning.
So, if I may, so, so what are the things that we can do, if any, to move this thing along? And if you don't know, sitting here, you can follow up. But I think, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of interest, to put it mildly, in this board and in this town, to get this thing moving along and to get it done. And so if there's anything that we can do, anyone that we can contact, anything we can do, any, any, you know, any contracts that we can move along to get this done sooner, I think there's a real interest on this board and in this town to do it. So tell us what it is.
Do you have a sense of why we don't have this back? I mean, is there something that, you're not telling, I mean...
No, I, I know that federally funded design contracts aren't as common, so I'm not as familiar with...
As compared to construction?
As, as compared to estate-funded.
Right.
Usually, you know, our contracts come through towns or through Mass DOT, so we're, you know, then we have a better sense of how long it takes to turn those around, and it's pretty standard. I haven't dealt with the FHWA design contract, and I don't think a lot of people, even at Mass DOT have, so I don't know what a normal turnaround time for these contracts.
So here's my, so my next question is, if we had it next week, if we had it next week, could we then move to the 75, then the 100, and be ready to go in January?
We could, yeah, we would, could accelerate our schedule, look at the design schedule, talk to the project manager at Mass DOT, and let them know that the town is very eager to make their January ad date.
So I would strongly suggest to you on behalf of this board that you do that tomorrow.
I, I think the problem isn't with the state.
I know, but I just want everybody to know that we want this done yesterday.
I, I agree with you, because I've made the same comments. Whatever we have to do, we will do. If we have to make the call, we will make the call. And it didn't matter to who. And the issue was always coming back that, no, it just has to go through the Federal Highway process.
Politics is politics. You move the process, you know, when you have an interest, you move a process forward. And I think that, you know where I am on this. I'm like, I'm ready for yesterday, so, go ahead.
So if I could just ask my question again, could I just, is there anything that we can do to move this along? And if, again, you, you may say, well, we'll think about it, and we'll let you know. But if, if there's anything that we can do to move it along, tell us what it is. Tell us now, or tell us in the future, and, and, and we'll do it. So I don't, so the question is, right now, is there anything that you can think of that we can do to move this thing along?
I mean, what Katie mentioned about contacting John McVann.
Right.
If anyone's been in contact with him, let's see, I don't know if he is the right person over there, but I'm sure he would know.
Could we ask the town administrator to call Mr. McVann?
I'll make some connections tomorrow. Previous MassDOT administrator, Tinlin, brought Federal Highway Administrator McEwen out to the site. We walked it in January of, of 2017. So there is interest from the Federal Highway. Obviously, you know, they, they would know the process better, but I will reach out to the Federal Highway Administrator.
Great, thank you.
Because I have to tell you, if, if it's going to take three and a half years, then, then, you know, I would, I would be interested in, in, in taking the heavy lift, lift of trying to recognize the reality that this isn't a park constitutionally protected, and that it is actually rotary, and so we'll have a little more flexibility in what we do with it, if it's going to take that long. The reason that, you know, I haven't been as interested in doing that is because we wanted to move this along and get it done, because it's, it's taken so long. If it's going to take that much longer, then, then I know I'm not that interested in, in just sitting by and accepting what we have to accept because of that. So, sorry to get on the soapbox.
Well, on those lines, I mean, if it were going to take that long, I think we should reconsider reopening Adams Street. Because that's the only reason I was in agreement to not reopen it last year, was because we were told by Howard Stein Hudson and others that we were going to lose the, the Federal Earmark if we didn't advertise this project in January of 19. And somehow, and I still can't understand it, but somehow in the summer of 2017, we, we needed a year and a half to get to the advertising deadline, and any change to the design was going to set us back from that year and a half. So now, if we're hearing it's going to take more than that time, then we, we have to revisit the whole project, I think.
And my biggest fear, having been involved in this 10 years as Chair of the Traffic Commission, prying to be here, is that if we had to go backwards to start all over again, we could potentially lose, all the earmarks are gone. And then where do we get any of the funding, forget the park, for the, for the infrastructure improvements to the critical, to that square? Either way, either when it's existing or going back, because just opening Adams Street still puts you back to the problem we had in 2011, which is when we closed it.
All the lights have to be...
Still in 1960's technology, as far as operation of the light system in the square, and there'd be no way to either for us to locally fund that, or we'd have to, we'd be starting from scratch.
The lights, the wiring.
All of it.
The software.
I mean, the 25% meeting, were you, I know Tom Hurley, were you on the board then?
Yeah, I was, yeah.
So was it you, was David already on the board as a pre-date, David? It was in this room.
I don't remember.
I remember that. I was cheap, I spoke at it. I think you're getting the urgency we're at. So I'm just going to repeat this, and if you have a question, I'll come to you, but I just want to repeat this from John Flynn. We need to know where, because that's critical. To Mr. Zulus's point, whatever we have to do collectively, we'll do to try and keep this moving forward. And that January 2019 date is critical to us, moving this forward. And Ms. Carlin, Ms. Carlin, do you have a question?
No.
Comment.
I, I think that this conversation got exactly where I wanted to go, so I'm not saying anything.
You're still talking to me?
Yeah, no, I, I, at some point, it would be good to know how that happened, that we were led to believe that we would, if we missed that date, that was it. And so we couldn't look at opening Adams Street again. But right now, let's just get it done.
You happy? No? I think we're, all right, we're good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so listen, don't be afraid to call. I mean, Michael's, he knows where we are on this. Going for this board here tonight, the prior board, the residents.
We had the meeting two weeks ago, three weeks ago.
Three weeks ago.
With who?
And we were...
With this group here, Howard Stein Hudson and Halverson.
And we still thought that it was January of nineteen. So if that, for them to come back today and make a statement that we can't make that...
The only way to make case law, the only way...
Yes, Councilman.
Right, so we'll know by next week what's going on, because to Mike's point, if it's gonna take three years, then we need to look at something else. Is that, is that, am I understanding the timeline?
Even to Mike's point, though, the reality of what he has said is, if you abandon where you are, we're between fifty and seventy-five, and going back to what it took to get here, and did we not, I think we already lost a million-dollar earmark already, correct?
Right.
Yes.
That earmark, and going, you're right, Bridget, earmarked funds are much easier to move than funds you're applying for, because there's a place mark, there's a placeholder there for it, that we would lose it completely, be back to zero, and have zero relief, and have wasted all this time. So to that point, and to the point of keeping this to fruition, to making this a reality and making it happen, I think that, you know where we're at on this. We have to do this, so... I don't think I can be any clearer. Did I get that right? Okay? Okay, thank you. Anything else? Do you have any other comments? But just on a good point, I do kinda like this. I do, this is included way more than I expected. I, you know, some people thought it would just be, and I've heard, you know, that it would just be... I'm pleasantly surprised with what you brought forward here tonight. I am.
Well, it's great to have the deck there, so it's an opportunity for a nice space to look at and potentially use.
I agree. Let's just get it built. And I'm sorry if I was a little... My colleague next to me's getting my blood pressure up tonight. Not Ms. Carr. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? We good? All right, thank you. I've lost my place.
I don't wanna get your footprint.
No, no, I wanna be here. I wanna be here. Okay, so Bill, stay right there. We're gonna go to item eight, conference with our planning director and his quarterly report. Which is gonna begin with the priority of East Milton town. Thank you, Bridget. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming in. I'm glad you came, because I'm glad I learned this tonight versus a week from now. Fred just got his front page story for tomorrow. The floor is yours, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. All right, my update as of June eleventh. Milton's Planning Department assures careful stewardship of the town's land, environment, water, air, energy, et cetera, providing guidance and protection to ensure a high quality of life for Milton residents today and in the future. Town planning involves research and analysis, strategic thinking, urban design, public consultation, policy recommendations, implementation, management, development of land in the public interest, and has an important influence on property values in our triple A bond rating. Our efforts have also contributed to the town's qualification and reputation as an award-winning community repeatedly voting among, voted among the best places to live by experts. We work to help developers and homeowners navigate the process while adhering to established policies and laws of Milton with an eye towards careful growth and finding innovative solutions while protecting the town, its neighborhoods, and its residents. During the calendar year of two thousand seventeen, Planning Board decisions and approvals came down that they had six Form A lots, approval not required, four subdivisions, four special permits, no subdivisions, two scenic road applications, and three site plan approvals. So far, in two thousand eighteen, the Planning Board has had three approval not required, no special permits, two subdivisions, two scenic roads, and two site plan approvals. So we've already almost matched up with what, year to year. Under new growth, as of June eleventh, the definitive subdivision under construction at Jill Kathleen. It's an eight-house subdivision on a three-point-six acre site. All eight house lots have been sold. The last two houses are being completed right now. Special permit, Woodmere, the old St. Pius Rectory site up on Brush Hill Road. A development of thirty-six new planned unit townhouses comprised of four affordable units. The development is underway. The roadway layout is constructed. The buildings are up in various stages. More than seventy-five percent of the units have been sold. Many are already occupied. The average market rate for the units in this development are nine hundred plus. The four required affordable units have all been sold. They're all occupied, and the seventy percent local preference was fulfilled. Applications that have been approved, Marine Way, two forty-five Highland Street. It's a seven buildable lots in a cluster development. It was approved back in March of two thousand seventeen. The site work has already started. The first building permit was issued last September, and you're probably looking at this September for that house to be occupied. The utilities are being put into the interior road. It'll be a private way inside the development. Seven buildable lots there. Town Farm, the Pulte Development, twenty-three single-family homes on thirty acres, all by a cluster, it's a cluster development with a special permit. Special permit was signed August thirteenth, two thousand seventeen. It was amended November two thousand seventeen when it received its access permit from DCR. The roadway off of Uncity Road should be ready for pavement by the middle of this week. If all goes as planned, house construction should take place this summer, first houses. Wentworth Farm off of Ford Ranch Road. It's a ten-house cluster development on a thirteen-plus acre site. Its decision was voted May two thousand seventeen. Roadway construction started last August. The sequencing is that there is a bridge that goes over a stream there. The bridge work has already started. The bridge should be completed this week, and the roadway across should be, by Friday of this week, they should be able to have trucks go to the far side. Utilities will be laid out as soon as that roadway starts. House construction could start by, should start this summer. Ten sixty-five Brush Hill, it's a two-house subdivision, was approved in May. That appeal is coming up quick. Fifteen Mathaus Street, it's a two-house subdivision approved in May two thousand eighteen. The final appeal on that is this coming Friday. Four seventy-five Adams Street, it was a special permit, site plan approval. Special permit was granted by the zoning board, but site plan approval was granted by the Planning Board.
That came down today, right? Is that it?
It did. There are two residential units over two commercial offices. The demolition of the old red house is now complete as of this morning. Building permit applications are with the building commissioner. Future developments that we're looking at are the Carberry Estate by Northland Residential, fifty-four townhouses on forty-nine acres. Right now, the project's actually being held up by a neighbor's court appeal. Ice House, the mixed-use development out there, May Town Meeting offered a change in the zoning per the Attorney General's comment back from February two thousand eighteen. I haven't heard anything else from that owner. Signed by law, new signed by law with efforts from the Planning Board and the Sign Review Committee was passed in October two thousand seventeen at Town Meeting. It was approved by the Attorney General May of two thousand eighteen. We had a zoning map that was approved at this May's Town Meeting. The new version takes advantage of the town's GIS mapping abilities. GIS is Geographic Information System. The Geographic Information Systems allows coordination between engineering, planning, and the assessor departments. The system allows residents to access data directly affecting their properties. Major projects not under the Planning Board's umbrella, East Milton, East Milton Deck. And I'll stop with that. Complete Streets Program. The Planning Department, together with the town engineer, completed the Complete Streets Program application process. Successful submissions to the program allows a community to apply for up to four hundred thousand dollars in state transportation funds towards the town's prioritization plan. The Complete Streets Program process called for a Complete Streets policy and an approved prioritization plan in this three-tier process. We completed the three tiers. The Planning Department applied and received a thirty-five thousand dollar technical assistance grant for the assistance with the submittals and the required public meetings that we just went through to get to this stage. The Animal Shelter. Animal Shelter Building Committee, I'm handling the site issues for the Selectmen, the property off the old landfill access road, dealing with wetland identification, the civil engineering issues, and utility locations. I've been handling the day-to-day of the committee issues regarding the programming and next steps, programming dealing with the architect. The Animal Shelter Committee, after an extensive programming effort, has been working on the building design. The committee has approved the initial draft forms. The architect and the location was determined by the civil engineer. The next steps are working with the civil engineer for extremely site-specific sighting issues, ledge location, stormwater system installation, utility installation locations, looking for water, sewer, and gas, where they're coming from and how they're getting there. There will be an appearance in front of the Conservation Commission in July. We're actually meeting with, the engineer and I are meeting with the town's agent tomorrow night to go through what we'll have to do for, to be ready for July. We're looking to have all of our necessary permitting in hand, we hope by fall.
Permitting to go out to bid?
That would be our desire?
What would be obstruction? We'll be holding that up from happening, from making it a reality?
Money.
Okay.
Money. I mean, I sent over bills from the architect today, no problems. I sent over geotech contracts today, no problem. It's, I think the bottom-line number scares everybody as we start. Every time we look at the building, the architect keeps trying to grow it. We keep trying to shrink it. He wants to grow it. We'll win. It will be smaller.
Is him growing it...
It means more money.
Where the number of two-point-seven comes that I saw on the paper, or...
That's where that number comes from.
Okay.
The easier, the easier time we have with the utilities and the wetland issues, the ledges, we actually have a newer design dealing with the rock on that site that we're building it for us while filling in the middle versus having a, just go-down-to-grade poured slab. So it's an engineering, which is why we had to have the geotech people. But it should save us several hundred thousand dollars with rock clearing.
Right, that's what the show, uh...
Yes.
Foundation, correct?
Yes.
Would be happy with that speedy, with a...
Yes, and that's...
I'd like to not see that existing building have to go through too many more winters. One more would be fine with me.
If it would make it. And I know, it only needs one more. I know that...
Write that down, Mr. Danny.
It's on tape. I know that Lauren and I and Bill Ritchie go through this daily of how do we speed this thing up?
Okay.
I know we've been dealing, we've been pushing Joe Prondak lately, because we need comments from him for the architect. I have a lot of conversations with John Thompson. I'm meeting the gas company out there tomorrow morning, so we are trying to move this thing very, very fast, but...
Okay.
There's a lot of moving pieces. Master Plan Implementation Efforts. Milton Village, Milton Waterfront, with MAPC Technical Assistance. Planning Department wrote and applied for a technical assistance grant from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. The grant provided assistance writing a draft of updated overlay zoning for properties in Milton Village. The idea was to start discussions with the landowners on potential future use of their properties. The proposed new zoning is intended to encourage Milton Village landowners to take advantage of smart growth components already in place, such as transit-oriented development. The new zoning tries to encourage maximization of the current space by allowing a mix of land uses. Some of this will be done by assimilation of properties due to the very small lots as currently configured. Part two of the grant is a review of our current waterfront uses. The waterfront element will proceed concurrently with the completion of the zoning study. It's anticipated that this element is not limited to preparation of a base map of the waterfront area, follow-up discussions with the Planning Department and users throughout the study of the waterfront area, outreach and discussions with focus groups consisting of existing users of Butta's, Conservation Commission, et cetera, coordination and discussion with DEP and CZM, or the permits that are required down there. The development of the program design for potential building program and its site improvements, preparation of sketches to illustrate the program and manage options, preparation of a brief summary report with figures. As a result of the draft and the master plan implementations meetings, the committee has undertaken a traffic study, a hydro study, which measures the water depth at certain points, sediment depths, and possible dredge spoilage areas, amounts of dredge spoilage that need to be removed.
In the river.
In the river. We also had the engineering company look at the integrity of the wall that's down there, the ramp that's on the far end, the ramp that has the marine rail. We had them look and look at the potential for using Captain's Landing, which is the land just beyond the parking lot itself owned by the Park Department.
Bill, just while you're updating that, I think we should just notify the committee that at the June twenty-fifth meeting, we may have a request from the committee to spend some of our additional budget. We have a fifty thousand dollar budget. We've spent a little over thirty, Bill, I think. So we're looking at some...
Thirty-six thousand we've spent.
Thirty-six. So we've spent, we have some estimates for some additional items that we wanna do at the waterfront, and the committee's gonna meet on the eighteenth to talk about that.
So just...
We may be back here to ask for this party and the planning board to approve the expenditure.
Right. I'm not, I don't...
You want on the twenty-first? We'll be ready on the twenty-first, where we're both together?
Yes.
You will?
We'll have those numbers on the twenty-first, and the committee will have already met. So you wanna put that as an item? Do you mind me of that, too? Yes, that the idea of having a meeting on the eighteenth, so we would be in line for the twenty-first, so, yes. And I don't have those numbers for, I know that those other numbers that we're talking about that we'll have a discussion on the eighteenth have to do with permitting the dock, permitting the dredge spoilage, the amount of dredge spoilage that would come out. What would that add for costs? It's doing a survey of the sediments themselves, so that we can figure out where we would have to dispose of them, the exact cubic footage of stuff that we, cubic yards, that we would be removing. Some of those numbers are high, but they're not, they're not crazy high. They're all within the budget that the committee had. The only thing I have left here is additional committees, I have two things. Additional committees staffed by the Planning Department. Traffic Commission, Traffic Commission's an advisory board to the Selectmen. The planning director is a member per the town's general bylaws. Committee meets as necessary, as called by the chairman, the town's DPW director. Telecommunications Design Review Committee, it's a three-member committee that approves cell tower locations, staffed by the Planning Department, one member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, one member of the Planning Board, one member appointed by the Selectmen. Affordable Housing Trust, it's a five-member committee appointed by the Selectmen, staffed by the Planning Department. Sign Review Committee, five-member board appointed by the Selectmen, staffed by the Planning Department. Committee meets as necessary when signage applications are submitted to the Building Department. The new and approved bylaw, signage bylaw, that got its Attorney General approval in May, allowed for three signs to apply under it, Mr. Chan's and five thirty-eight Adams Street, Craft and Brew at twenty-five Central Ave, and Reality Realty, four oh eight Granite Ave. All those signs were approved under the new bylaw, so they did not have, they could have lit signs approved by the Sign Review Committee and did not have to come to the Selectmen for approval. Under the Home Program, it's a federally funded program funded by HUD for affordable housing efforts. It's a South Shore Coalition to which Quincy, Braintree, Weymouth, Milton, and Holbrook are members. My last piece is Green Communities. As many of you already know, the town of Milton was designated a green community back in two thousand and ten. Since becoming a green community, the town's reduced its overall energy consumption by some twenty-five percent townwide. Each year, in order for the town to maintain its green community designation, we're required to update our annual report to Green Communities and Mass Energy Insight. This is the very time-consuming... This is the very time-consuming process. Once we complete our annual report, we're allowed to competitively participate for energy grants funding up to $250,000 a year. The town of Milton has been very fortunate in having an energy committee that's dedicated to this mission, and it's been very successful. I want to thank some of the current and the past members, William Ritchie, William Clark, Diane Coligan, Jay Bullio, Robert Mayhew, Emily Martin, Tim Zawinski, Lauren Masiya, and our resident expert, Henry McLean, who's a local architect. Since 2011, the town has received $647,893 in green communities and DOR-funded grants. Over the same time, the town has received approximately $220,000 in utility funding and other grants to assist us with energy upgrades throughout the town. The good news does not stop there. Over the last five years of energy project, the town's efforts continued to bring energy savings for the entire town close to $160,000 a year. On June 19th, 2017, the town has received $246,645 from Department of Energy Resources. During the same time, we applied, applied and received additional utility incentive funding of $54,355 to complete the $301,000 energy project slated for last year. All projects were completed by January of 2018, just in time to apply for the March 19 funding round. In March, we applied for $254,146 in 2018's green community funding. Hopefully, we'll be hearing positive news from DOE in the next couple of weeks.
Just a quick question on that. Can you, especially for the new members that are here, can you just kind of paint a picture of where we fall in relation to our neighbors as far as our efforts in green communities? You don't have to be shy either. You can, either one of you.
Yeah, I believe we're the greenest community in the South Shore.
That's my point, that I wanted to get out there. So, thank you.
And that was before they recalculated their algorithm for the streetlight conversion.
Imagine if we got a windmill.
And we would have been aware. Yeah, we, it takes, it takes an incredible amount of time for staff to take and follow each one of those projects. There's a state process that they come in and they check, sometimes two and three times on every project. They're there in the beginning, they're in the middle, they want to see it in the end, and then they want you to write about it. And you have to write about it twice during the year. That paper trail that they want is, every time it comes in, everybody ducks and turns away and doesn't want to be found because it's cumbersome, it takes a lot of time, and you always have to give it to somebody else to go back and proof. And even when you want somebody to proof it, oh no, I did it last time, I don't want to do it again. Between the spreadsheets and the pros that you have to put down, and then go back and check on everybody, why is somebody following me around? I just did it. It is extremely tedious, but...
It's the reality of the grant world, unfortunately. The good, the good is the check, the hard...
It was a 640, you know, $640-something thousand that we've already received in these things. It's the more than $160,000 a year that we do in savings. We did $300,000 in projects last year funded by these programs, so our goal is to do it again this year.
We'll fight the traffic to get to the State House to get that check again.
Oh, I know you will.
We brought Bill and Bill last year. It was, it was 260-something thousand dollars.
Two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand. We brought the big check home.
Anything else?
No.
Questions? Nope? None?
I actually have one. I'm sorry.
No.
I don't want to get your blood pressure up again.
I saw you, I saw the, I saw the legal pad going here. I thought it was cross-examination.
No, no, no. It's, it's, it's really big picture, Bill. Does the planning department have a vision for development in Milton over the next five years? And if not, would it benefit from, from that kind of vision?
I think if we were a community that had a lot of developable space, I'd say you're right on. But what we get are infill or redevelopment, and you don't really know. I can pick out a few places, but most of the big places are gone. The sites that people choose now are extremely difficult. When you say Jill Kathleen, they put in eight houses, one of those houses, they took out eight to 10 feet of rock to put one house in. You don't expect that. The easy stuff is gone. The infill stuff is what we get now. So I think we have a plan of where these things are going to come up, but at the same time, we're not directing somebody to, we're not pointing developers at any of our development.
So it's fair to say that, that by necessity, you're more reactive?
Yes.
It's still very busy as a reactive department.
We try to be, we try to be proactive ahead of time, knowing that if there's some type of zoning that we want to, we need to tweak it so that it is, it was bare last time, we want to make sure we remove that part. We do that. That, that's being proactive to a point. But I'm not, I'm not hiding open space from a developer. I think we created our, our new town zoning map by putting in a, a layer. It's built with layers, not just, if you look at it, you see that there is a state is all marked in green. Well, if, in a normal town, you would not have a state layer on. On our map, by putting a state layer on, it takes away all that developable land. You take that same one and go to some of the South Shore communities, they don't have the benefit that they could turn a state layer on like that. That means that's all developable. That means that you've got developers lined up to try to figure out how to buy this piece to cut it up into as small a piece as they can, pieces as they can get. We don't have that. Ours is...
So it's like what you see in a Westwood Station right now. I mean, it's just massive.
You have to do assimilation of parcels to get somewhere today in Milton. Down in the village, the only way you're going to do it is to be able to bring people together. If you want to do it on an individual lot, it just doesn't work.
Can I just ask you, can I just ask you a follow-up to your meeting the other night? And you've done an incredible amount of work on the master plan committee, but I think there was some angst the other night. There is no project pending down there now, correctly? We do not have a...
That's correct.
There's no project that's pending?
No.
This is just a introduction of the work of your committee for that district?
Yes, and, and I think, and I, I was just going to add to answer to Mike's question. Bill didn't really say this, but I think what he and Lauren are really trying to do to be proactive is, is a lot of their work with the master plan implementation committee because that's supposed to be more planning rather than reacting. So, and they're, they're pretty heavily involved in everything that that committee's doing. And that's a, I'm glad you brought it up, Richard, because that's a prime example of the town trying to take a proactive approach. Because, you know, we get a lot of criticism of being reactive and we're not really planning. And you see all the, angst is a good word, Richard, because I think there is a lot of angst in the, in the, in the Milton Village area over this. And it, there's a lot more process still to play out. I've been trying to encourage everyone to just calm down a little bit and let the process play out, offer comments, but there's still a lot more review, a lot more due diligence that needs to get done. But that is a good area where, where Bill and Lauren are trying to take a proactive approach.
I mean, we listened to this with, we heard the same kind of thing when we had Milton Muse. We heard the same thing when Carberry and Northland got together initially, you know, oh my, they're going to change whatever, everything that's out there. We're working with the developer, with the landowner, with the neighbors to try to find that common ground. I think the majority of people who live in and around the Carberry Estate would say that that system worked. I think if you look at the people in and around the Milton Muse site, they would say that the system worked. We're attempting to do something down in Milton Village, well, East Milton's right behind it. We've had the same process over on, in Scotts Woods with a couple of different developments that took place over there. You know, it's, it's, it's working with the neighbors, it's working, you know, with the developer and trying to find, you know, where's the common ground? We're, we're not on either person's side as much as we're on that fence trying to make sure that both sides understand what the rules are and what the next steps would be. If somebody says, well, I heard you last night, but what do you think? Did you understand what I said? Yes, but you didn't say, you didn't give an answer of what you think? Well, that's good. That, that means that I'm giving you both sides of an issue. I don't want to give you, this is what you should build. That's not, you don't want me here to do that.
If I may, I think you've articulated a vision, you know, to go through that process at Milton Village, go through that process at East Milton Square. That sounds to me like a vision for the department.
Just, and just to follow up to Steve O'Donnell's point tonight on making the village a historic district?
Historic district.
Do you think it would be prudent for us, I mean, my father came from, my grandparents lived right there, and, and I thought of this the other day, there's a great picture inside the Lower Mills Tavern, if anyone hasn't seen it, so just of that entire, all of Milton Village, it's got to be in like the 1920s, but it's a great shot all the way up to the, would it be prudent of us to engage in conversations with the city? Because it's Lower Mills, it's, it's both sides of that river, to see if they might want to do it as well? Maybe if we both apply to make the entire Lower Mills a historic district? I mean, the commonality there for the bigger part of this, the past century, was Baker Chalkland, and before that, it was industrials, I mean, it was, the town waff was a commercial fishing location for many, many years in the 1800s. I just, maybe we should do that. It might be prudent of us to have conversations because it is, it does encompass both sides of that river.
Right. It is the first area of industrialization in this country.
Right, yeah. Okay, that's all, that was my...
And it's important to note, just to follow up, for the viewers who are watching and who were, who were watching the meeting last Thursday, you know, no one expects that the planning board is just going to rubber stamp with the master plan implementation committee, which is a study committee and an advisory committee is putting forward. Everyone's intent is the planning board's going to do its own review, probably make some, a lot of changes. I'm guessing there could be some significant changes that the planning board might make because you have five independent minds on that planning board, and not all of them have been involved in the process. So there's going to be a lot more process to happen, and that's why I think everyone just needs to let the process play out, make their voices heard, but give this the time...
I don't think that they're going to jump to make it by, by August. I think they're looking for a much later, they're not going to make an October town meeting, they're looking for a future date. But the process has started. They have something that they can now work with, talk about, go back and change. If they did nothing, they'd be accused, you know, rightfully so, of sitting on their hands. They're not. They are looking at something. They're looking to take and maybe make some change, they've at least sparked discussion.
We, we thought the village would be easy. The joke on the committee was, because people have asked, why not start with East Milton Square? And the committee said, look, Milton Village is going to be so much easier, there's far fewer homeowners right in the area, and we're finding out that that really wasn't the case.
Please, can we go to East Milton?
That's not the case.
See, I, I think there's almost more, when I, when I listened to that the other night, I almost felt there was more in the village than to address than...
Well, it turned out that it was...
High Street alone is just, that's a...
It's, it's buildings, but since that time, we've actually heard from some of the landowners. We've heard from people who have not made comments right along. So the, the discussion did do what it was meant to do, and that sparked more discussion. Now hopefully, there will be more people willing to take and make their opinions to the, both the master plan implementation committee and the, and the planning board in the processes that moves forward.
And I do appreciate the fact that we've had these joint meetings with the planning board, and we have another one scheduled, and I just think, even though much of this is statutory or legally decisions that come under their purview, I think the fact that all of us are at the table, to your point, is a proactive thing, and I think that's a good thing. So if there's no further questions, thank you very, anyone else? Any, we go? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. I had 9:30 in my mind here tonight, and we were going to make it. Item nine, a discussion on social media policy for boards and committees under the purview of, just under the purview of us and the Board of Selectmen, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I yield the floor to Mr. Zors.
Yes, the policy committee met on Monday, and we have teed up for discussion at our next meeting, several procedural policies, including agenda formats and content, regular and special meetings of the board, rules of order and voting method, policy adoption, and executive sessions. We're teeing that up for next time. Now, why do I mention it this time? I mention it this time because one of the, one of the policies that we'll propose is policy adoption. And that policy provides for a first reading and a second reading, and that's what we're proposing for this policy that we've, that we've recommended tonight. We, this board, or this board, the prior board, Milton Board of Selectmen, approved a social media, social media policy for town employees back in February. What was not included at that time was a social media policy covering boards and committees and also appointed representatives of the town. And that's what we've attempted to look through in our committee, and we have presented to you what we think is the best example to start from and to discuss tonight and take comments on in our quote-unquote "first reading." And that's the policy that was included in your packet. And so...
We, we received several policies in our packet.
Oh, really? Okay.
Yes, so I, I'm, I'd like to refer to the correct one.
Yeah, I just have one, which would be the one...
Town of Easton?
From Town of Easton, right.
I also disseminated the Town of Millis, which was a much larger document.
Millis, I have East Hampton, West Newbury, yeah.
It's, it's the, it's the Easton one that we, that we, that we went through and we thought was the best one to start from. And I apologize if that wasn't clear, and it wasn't clear, because that's the only one I received, so, so, so I apologize for that. So, as I said, this, this, this policy covers boards and committee members. It is similar in many respects to the policy that covers employees, although I would say it is overall less mandatory and more, more of a policy that is, I'm searching for the right word.
Voluntary acknowledgement.
Thank you, Mike. Very good. Excellent. You've articulated my thoughts once again. And so anyway, so, so that's, that's what we, when we went through, we thought that was the best one to start from and discuss tonight, so that if anyone has any thoughts or suggestions tonight and/or in the next two weeks, our hope is to tee this up for further discussion and a vote at our next meeting.
Can I add one, one thing, Mr. Vice Chair? We, we plan on meeting as a committee, the policy committee, the Mondays in between Board of Selectmen meeting, to disseminate information and get it back in time for us to put something together that's more presentable for a second reading, the, the second time around.
If...
The idea is that we would meet next Monday morning to put together any comments that people may send this draft around one more time and then vote it on the 25th.
If possible.
If possible.
If possible.
That's right.
I've got some comments on, on the Easton draft, but if anyone else would prefer to go first, that's fine with me as well.
I'm good. So I'm, I'll say this, that if we can get our comments in and work this out by that meeting, I'm happy to put it on the agenda for the 25th. Are they, are they big ones?
Well, some of them are questions that I think we should just vet a little bit tonight. And one is a question, I, the way I'm reading this, it applies to all appointed boards, all appointed officials, all elected boards, you know, which obviously includes boards like the school committee, moderator-appointed committees. So, I guess one point is if we're, if we are intending it to apply to them... So, I guess one point is if we're, if we are intending it to apply to them...
Are we intending, that's why I asked you, that I thought this was just gonna be boards and committees under our purview.
I think that's the intention.
Yeah. We specifically removed the School Committee from town employees, I mean, School Department from town employees.
And you bring up a good...
Okay, well, I mean, all we have is the Easton model, so all we can go is on what's, what's in the Easton. But what about the Library Board of Trustees? What about the moderator-appointed committees? So are they intended to be excluded? Because if, I, one thing we'd have to do, I think, is send this to the moderator, get his input into it. And some of the other elected boards would probably wanna weigh in on it.
I think you can go either way. You could either A, let them do their own, which would probably take longer, or B, I like your suggestion, let's send it to both. Let's send it to the Library Trustees and, and the moderator and say, "This is what we're thinking as a unified part..." I mean, the, the application and, and the, and the intent of it really would apply to all of us. And I'd even go far as to say to some of the chair of the School Committee and see what they think of it and see if they want to. And then, and then if they all, let them all, let's see if we can all adopt it at the same time. How's that sound?
Well, yeah, and I, I guess that's the question. Can we, as, you know, the chief, executive chief elected board, set a policy that would apply to the schools? Now, the School Department, governed by statute, they're, you know, they've, the School Committee runs the schools, but could we adopt something that would apply to all of the elected boards? I guess that's a, that's a question. So that's one of them. And one B, where it says that the purpose of this policy is to provide notice to appointed and elected board and committee members, I think we need to add in appointed and elected officials and board and committee members. In section two, the, the definition of official seems to cover it, but there's a few inconsistencies here where there's a lot of reference to boards. And we wanna be sure that whether it's the Community Advisory Committee representative or the Norfolk County Advisory Board representative or the Tree Warden, all of those people who are appointed but are not on committees are still bound by this.
Right, because they're appointed by this board. I agree.
Yes.
And, and I, I do think we wanna be catch-all, that we get everybody. Someone doesn't fall through the cracks.
Some of the smaller things I could probably email to the town administrator for the committee. I think one of the things we have to think about, and I'm not sure we need to answer it tonight or even at the next meeting, but obviously, there's a difference between appointed boards and elected boards. And this comes up in a couple of places, but one that I think we need to think about is, I mean, elected boards report to the voters and elected, all five of us who have run campaigns have had Facebook pages that are campaign Facebook pages where we're putting out our opinions on different town issues. Obviously, we'd still wanna be able to do that.
As candidates.
Yeah, but if you're up for reelection, you're a candidate, but you're also an office holder. So elected boards need to be able to have campaign Facebook pages, I think we would all agree, or, or websites, or whatever the social media, Twitter, whatever people may use in campaigns.
You wanna put an insert for that, to cover that? Or you think this...
Yeah, as long as we're not prohibiting anyone. I mean, right now, on page, I guess this is page three, it's number six. I mean, there's, there's talk about officials expressing only their personal opinions, and I guess we, all elected boards, we need to clarify on Facebook pages that they're speaking individually. That may take care of it, but I wanna be sure we're not, there's no unintended consequences here. And number 10 on that page, I think we're talking about specifically employees of the town, and we need to, that would seem to be the intent, we just need to clarify that. One of my biggest concerns is in, it's section six, on the last page of the policy before you get to the acknowledgement. And I think we should delete this sentence. And first of all, I think it's unclear, because I'm not even sure how, how this would even be enforced or if, I don't think our town chatter even contemplates this, but the Easton policy says elected officials may be subject to a request for their resignation, public censure, or reprimand, or a recall petition in accordance with the town chatter. And I have a huge problem with that.
I don't think that even exists. I don't think we even have such a thing.
We don't. And we don't, I don't believe we have anything for a recall petition. The others, I mean, the only, the only body that I think for an elected board, appointed is different, but for an elected board, I think the only one who could request a resignation or a sent, would be the board itself.
Right.
And this doesn't even specify, you know, may be subject to a request, from whom, what would, what would the circumstances be? You certainly wouldn't wanna set the bar too low and allow some kind of a drastic measure like this to be in place for just someone putting up something on a Facebook page that, you know, may not be discriminatory or some of these other categories that are, that are cautioned against or prohibited, but, I mean, there could be a very questionable call, and that seems to me very drastic. I also think in section four, reporting the violation to, well, this Easton says to the grievance officer, the current, in, current grievance officers, they list two, one of them is the town administrator, I don't know who the other, they just list the names, so I don't know who's the other person, might be the personnel director in Easton.
Does, does, do we have a grievance officer in the department in, for employees, one?
No, it would be the, the Human Resources Director.
Human Resources.
Yeah.
No, but again, for appointed, that's fine for employees, but for appointed and elected boards...
I agree.
The, the town administrator of Easton was at the MMA's annual conference in January, and the social media, there was a whole presentation on this, and he acknowledged that that is a flaw in their policy, because the elected boards don't appoint, don't report to the town administrator or to the HR director.
Did he have a suggested remedy?
No, he just, he just acknowledged that that's, you know, there's real no one, there's really no way to enforce that, because the elected boards report to the voters. So, so I think there is some, I mean, it's a, it's a good one to start with, and a lot of the other towns are based on it. It looks like a lot of them are sharing the same form. And this was recommended as one of the forms at the MMA meeting, but I think there's some unintended consequences we need to be thinking about and some ambiguous language that we wanna be sure is buttoned down, so that we don't have a situation where, where just because someone may disagree with what an elected or appointed board member says, that there's some kind of drastic remedy.
You wanna take some time to work on that?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I, I agree with, I agree with all of those comments.
I do, too.
The one that, that I think we need to give some more thought to and perhaps consult with town council is to which boards it applies and whether it can apply to elected boards, because we are, the Board of Selectmen is the chief policymaking board of the town. And I could see an argument that the chief policymaking board of the town can set policies that cover elected boards. But I think that's something we should probably flesh out and maybe, maybe run by town council.
I'm, I have a feeling that he would probably have a pretty quick answer to that. Do you, do you wanna do this yourself?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Okay. You all right with that?
And if we can set policy, that, so if it would bind them as well, then I think, you know, as fellow elected boards, we should give them an opportunity to review and comment on it.
Yep.
And the moderator.
I think that makes good sense.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody? We good? So let's, let that, and then you can, you can let us know. Depending where we, let's look for the 25th. If we're not ready for the 25th, we'll go to the next meeting after that. But I'd like to get this done sooner versus later.
I, I, yeah.
You'd like to have this in place sooner rather than later? Okay.
Because social media is part of every minute of every day.
There's no question. And there's no question, that's why I think it, based on some of the feedback, again, this is a jumping off point, it's a starting point. I think one of the reasons that we formed this committee to begin with was to avoid some of the examples that you just gave. And if we start sending something out for review to a variety of different boards and committees, we're chasing our own tail.
No, but I do get, I do get the point. I think if, I think asking town council is, because I think he can give us a pretty quick answer. Because if I am an elected official, I think, I might think I have, I have some skin as far as comment to whether or not this, if I'm the moderator and we're gonna set a policy that affects the entire Warren Committee, who he appoints, I think he's at least gonna have some comment on it. But I think from a, a legal point of view, I think that John Fulcher will be able to answer this pretty quickly. I think that he'll have a pretty good idea of where we are on this. So I, I, I know what you're saying as far as, but there's a difference, and Katie, you're right, there's a difference between people who are appointed and people who sit on boards, who are appointed by someone else who was elected, just like we are, even though as Mike said, we are the chief... I just wanna, I'd like to be, as I say again, on firm ground before we, and I think, I think John Fulcher will probably answer this pretty quickly.
So I think we can commit to sharpening our pencils and having a red line with, with these, you know, with the, with proposed changes for the next meeting, probably for discussion, and perhaps at that point, we can, we can decide about, about disseminating it to other elected boards and the moderator for comment. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And, and I'll leave it to you whether you think, whether you guys think it should be submitted to us for this, additional discussion or for approval. All right? You all right with that?
May I ask a procedural question?
Sure. You're being too quiet over here tonight.
I think Katie and I were waiting to meet as the Finance Committee until we actually voted the committees, and we didn't get to that, I don't think, at the retreat. So my question is, when are we doing that?
I thought we did that.
I, I haven't seen minutes.
The charge to the committee, you mean, Melinda?
Right.
Yeah.
So why don't I say this? 21st, it'll be there. Quick, and whether we do it by ourselves, I'll have it ready for the 21st.
Okay.
On the agenda, how's that?
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Okay. Number nine, I'm losing my, approval of the Milton Land Conservation Trust. And we have a motion before us, and if someone wants to read that, I take it that Mr. Cronin and Mr. Wendell are trustee, oh, they are trustees of the Milton Land Conservation Trust, so we do have a motion before us. Anyone wanna speak? So this motion, just to those who don't, this is to approve and sign the acceptance by the Milton Conservation Commission and the assignments of restrictions from John Cronin and Edward Wendell, who, Jr., who are the trustees of our land, relative to conservation restrictions for the following parcels, and I believe these are town-owned pieces of land, correct? That's how this is happening. And the locations of them are at 520 Randolph Ave, which is near the DPW ad, right? Right near that?
No, it's up further, it's near Gun Hill, near the cemetery.
163 Gun Hill Road, and the others being on Bradley, where, I don't know where Bradley Glen Road is.
I asked Emily to check whether that meant Bradley Road, because the documentation we have says Bradley Glen, but...
I've never heard about Bradley Glen.
Yeah, I think it's part of the stuff in behind 520 Randolph Ave.
Is it real?
That abuts the, yeah.
Emily, quick question to you.
Does Gun Hill and Randolph Ave meet?
Bradley Glen Road is, you know, for Gun Hill? You don't know? All right. I trust that, did this come from, this came from Mr. Cronin and Mr. Wendell? Is that how this came to us?
Came from the Conservation Commission.
The Conservation Commission, okay, so I'm, they're the experts in this, so I take it they know where they're at. So I have a motion before us. Can I get someone to propose this motion?
Oh.
And then...
I'll, I'll do the first. I'll move that we approve and sign a quitclaim deed from John A. Cronin and Edward E. Wendell, Jr., trustees of the Milton Land Conservation Trust, to the Town of Milton, acting by and through its Conservation Commission, relating to vacant land located on Randolph Avenue as described therein.
Second.
Any discussion?
So just so I understand, so this is the conservation, there was vacant land that somehow ended up in the hands of the Conservation Commission that is now being deeded to the town? Is that, is that what's happening?
I think the Milton Land Conservation Trust is winding down.
I see.
And is looking to transfer its remaining conservation interests to the Conservation Commission.
I see.
To be held by the Conservation Commission. At least, that's what I, my understanding was.
And does that mean, Katie, that the Milton Land Conservation Trust will never have any additional land to it?
Yeah, I think they're winding down. That's why I think the letter is just asking us to acknowledge also 50 years that they've worked to protect open space in the town, but they used to have three trustees, they're down to two.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else has any more information on that.
Right, no, and I, I was wondering about that, if they just were unable to get new trustees or felt that they, the trust has fulfilled the purpose of gathering what, what they could and now wanted to transfer it to the town.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other concerns on this, or comments? I'm just trying to get down to it here. I just wanna look on my time. Okay.
Well, I, I mean, I, I saw that the Conservation Commission signed off on this and...
They need our approval. We've signed some of these in the past for them.
Right, right. I just didn't know if anyone had spoken with them and...
No. This is the first, I'm, this is the first one of the, for me, I knew it existed, I didn't know it was winding down, but this is the first one of these that I've seen here come before us. I mean, these are relatively small pieces.
We asked town council, and he said it needed to be, to be voted as an agenda item.
And so, just, it appears that there are conservation restrictions...
Right.
That, that go with the land. It's unclear what they are, but it's probably the case that the Conservation Trust would not, would not deed the land to us without the restrictions, so.
Right. I, I'm just, when I was on the Conservation Commission, there was a bit of a push to try to get some contiguous parcels set aside, to get landowners to set aside pieces of their, their land to provide things like wildlife corridors or buffers, additional buffers for wetlands. I had worked on the Forbes Woods piece, and I, I think some of this has to do with, you know, that recognition at the time that we, we don't want to let all the land that, that people own be completely developed, so.
The only prior experience I've had with it on this board is a few years ago, when there was some land on Milton Street that the Conservation Commission was taking for conservation, to be, to hold in perpetuity for conservation, and they had to sign off on it and we had to sign off on it. So I, I think this is the same idea, and we have Kathleen O'Donnell, who's the attorney for the Conservation Land Trust, we have her letter in the package. Her last, her second-to-last paragraph there mentions that the trust has started to, started to wind down its operations.
Right.
So it sounds as though these are the remaining, she also says this is, they're voted to transfer the remaining real estate assets to the Town of Milton.
Right.
And just looking at the overheads of these locations of them, I can understand why they don't, why they did this. It just makes sense. And the fact that it's from Kathleen, that, that, okay, so, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the, what do we have? I think we need to read the additional part of this. Katie, to approve and sign an acceptance by the Milton Conservation Commission?
We could, or we could do it as a separate vote.
All right. Wanna do it together, you wanna do it as a separate vote?
Maybe a separate, because they're on two separate documents.
All right, so all those in favor of the first motion currently on the floor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, that's, you know, okay, can I get a motion on the second one?
I'll move that we approve and sign an acceptance by the Milton Conservation Commission of an assignment of restrictions from John A. Cronin and Edward E. Wendell, Jr., trustees of the Milton Land Conservation Trust, relating to conservation restrictions for the following parcels as described therein. Lot A2, 520 Randolph Ave, Lot B2, 163 Gun Hill Road, Lot 6, Bradley Glen Road, and Lot 6A, Bradley Glen Road.
Give a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Eleven, approval Eagle Scout letter of recognition. Zachary Bacallos is a member of Quincy's Boy Scout Troop 42 at East Congregational Church, where he has completed his Eagle Scout project of refreshing a garden at the church. Troop 42's advancement chairperson has requested that the board recognizes Zachary's efforts in the town, will allow it to be included in a display during his Court of Honor on Sunday, June 24th. I just wanna add, I wanna thank Chase Berkeley and Tom McCarthy from the DPW who helped with this. This involved the movement of a large stone that's in that garden right at the corner of Pierce and Adams. It was just two big, I want to thank Joe Sloan from these car, who came out and brought this to me. And they moved it, and the scouts went in and did all their work, and it made it much easier. So, congratulations to him on becoming an Eagle Scout. And just to follow up, I did hear from one life scout mother this week, resident too. There are several life scouts looking for Eagle projects in the town to do right now, to complete this. You have to do this by your eighteenth birthday, so if there's anyone who can think of one, if they could just reach out to us at Town Hall. And as Katie knows, being here for so long, we've had a lot of Eagle Scouts come through here in the past few years, and as I've always said, this is something that attaches to you in life, and I've always been amazed at the people who I either read or hear about or meet that were Eagle Scouts in life. So, we have a motion, and entertain if someone would read it.
I make a motion to approve and sign a letter of recognition for Quincy Troop Forty-two's Zachary Bacallos to distinguish his contribution to the town and his achievement of attaining the rank of Eagle Scout.
Second, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just might add, as a friendly amendment, just say, "to acknowledge" rather than "distinguish", just to distinguish, to acknowledge his contribution to the town.
I'm okay with that, you okay with that? Emily's, everyone all right with that?
Sure.
It's a friendly amendment?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, congratulations. Twelve, approval of the year-end transfers. We have the Assessors Office, the Council on Aging, Parks and Recreation, and the Personnel Board. We have a motion before us? Someone like to review this and make a motion?
To approv...
Go ahead, Melinda.
Oh, to approve and forward to the Warrant Committee the following year-end transfer requests from the Assessors Office in the amount of ten thousand dollars from its salary and wage line to its general expense line for the purpose of hiring an appraiser for an upcoming appellate tax board case. From the Council on Aging in the amount of seven hundred and four dollars and sixty cents from its salary and wage line to its general expense line for the purpose of paying a heating bill and building maintenance. From the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of ten thousand dollars from its recreation wages, permanent staff and recreation, seasonal staff lines to its grounds and building maintenance line for the purpose of turf maintenance and the purchase of park soil and gravel. And finally, from the Personnel Board in the amount of three thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars thirty-five cents from the Selectman's Salary and Wage Line to the Personnel Board's Salary and Wage Line for the purpose of salaries.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I just ask about that last one?
No. Personnel Board?
Yeah, do we, because we're transferring funds from our wage, the way this reads, from our salary and wage line to the personnel's salary and wage line. And I just, I just wasn't sure what that...
This is a charge off to us?
So, that was, it was a contractual obligation that was negotiated after the FY eighteen budget was presented. The Assistant Town Administrator, HR Director's salary is split between the Personnel Board and the Selectmen's budget. It's been accounted for in the FY nineteen budget, which was just passed at town meeting, but this negotiation took place after the FY eighteen budget had been presented.
Got it.
And approved.
Thanks, Mike.
I knew there was a share there somewhere. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Forty-five minutes behind my schedule, let's go. Okay. Mr. Dennehy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I'll be brief, just a couple of commendations. Each of you were privy to an email that we received from UMass Amherst. And Chris Trudell, who's our Assistant Town Manager, dutifully made the trek out to the Amherst campus at least six times for training purposes and spent nearly fifty hours out there, and has quote-unquote "become a Rhodes Scholar", pun intended. No, it's a huge accomplishment under John Thompson, Town Engineers tutelage. Chris has become an invaluable asset to our town, so I just want to acknowledge that the back-and-forth commute and the dedication. It's a nice, very nice letter written from an Associate Director out there at UMass. But kudos to Chris, he's continuing to further his education, and he's one of the young, bright minds that work behind the curtain in the town, so I just want to acknowledge that for him. Secondly, you're all privy to an email from our Veteran Services Director. Some communities around the Commonwealth are starting to decorate their squares with some banners that display the likeness of those from the town who are serving in our armed forces. He went so far as to get some prices on that, if that's something that this board would entertain. We could take a look at some remaining FY eighteen dollars and try to make that happen. But I think the example that was shown, presented to Mr. Cook was Greenfield, Massachusetts, and the display is, it's noteworthy and eye-catching, and very respectful of people dedicating their lives to the armed services, so.
Yeah, Mike, if I could just add on, I did first see it on Facebook a few days ago, from Kevin.
Yeah, Kevin had it on.
And then he did send around an email as well, which we received today, and he included some photographs, and it's, it's actually very impressive, frankly, and it would, it would look good wherever we ultimately decide to place it. And the cost is very, very modest, if I recall correctly. I think Kevin quoted us between forty and sixty dollars per banner.
Correct.
So, I think it's a, frankly, it's a no-brainer, so something to consider.
Great. Thirdly, and not lastly, is the Solid Waste Advisory Committee. We need to convene soon. Not only are we entering the fifth, soon to enter the fifth year of our five-year contract, but it has become readily apparent to anyone reading the Boston Globe or working in the industry or dealing with the industry that it's, it's a moving target. We received a letter from our disposal site for trash informing us of potentially, you know, a thirty or forty percent increase. So, we need to sit down and think about how we approach this. I've reached out to my counterparts in Boston, they're seeing similar, if not more disturbing, stuff coming from the recycling markets. They entered into a very prudent contract that is winding its way down as well. We, we know it's about quality of life services. Our partners to the east, Quincy, recently replaced their hauler. So, I think we really need to take a good look and very seriously look at what is coming down the road in this industry. It's, it's going, could be quite expensive to get rid of trash, and recycling for that matter, so. That committee hopefully will meet next week. The new committee, as it's... So, that's something that I need, I'm not sounding an alarm or anything, but it's, it's something that will be here before we know it, and it's, it's real dollars that can add up very quickly. And lastly, Bush Forty-one, George Herman Walker Bush, will turn ninety-four years old tomorrow, so we want to wish him a early happy birthday, having been born in this town. And I believe there was a plaque dedicated many years ago.
At the corner of Hurlcroft, not Hurlcroft, Hutchinson. Hutchinson and Adam Street.
I think Selectwoman Conlon had something to do with that back in the day.
Way back when, yes.
Yeah, so, that plaque is there, it's been maintained, and a nice letter to the editor last week acknowledging how nice it looked and its place in our community, so happy birthday to Mr. Bush.
We wrote to him when he turned ninety, and he wrote back to the town, so tried to keep a little bit of a connection to him.
He was quite a gentleman. Actually, I still have, the day he was inaugurated, do you remember this, the post office?
Mm-hmm.
I probably have, I found twenty of them the other day. So, you go down and you've got, it was timestamped for that day, the day of his inauguration. Mr. Mullin, who was the clerk at the time, I think he thought they were going to be worth a lot of money, but when I retired, I found them all in my locker, I'm like, I don't think they're worth that. But to his credit, just very shortly, he, we were a hundred years old in nineteen ninety, my dad was chief, and Tom Flatley was friends with him, and invited him to come here to commemorate the hundredth, we were like the sixth oldest police department in the Commonwealth. And he couldn't come, but he invited the chief, my mother actually got to go as well, and I think it was a lottery. I didn't, I think there were twelve officers come to the White House and go to the Oval Office. There's a whole section in the library and the police station, too, dedicated to President Bush. And then, as Katie knows, he came, it was much later, he wasn't president, he was going on Red Sox game that night.
Yeah.
He was going on a Red Sox game, yeah.
Nineteen ninety-seven, August of ninety-seven.
Is that when it was ninety-seven?
Yep.
Quite a man.
Does it make sense to write him a letter again this year?
Yeah, why not? We should, we should write him a letter.
Will do.
Okay.
I talked to a few people last year, including the moderator, about trying to see if we could maybe get him to make another visit to Milton, but his health, I think, we were told his health really is probably going to prohibit that, but that would be nice.
Okay, you're good?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, so I'm just going to be, I'm going to try to be, first, I just want to thank the Planning Board and the Mass, the Planning and Permentation Committee, they did, really, there was a lot of work to do that the other night. It really was, and I just went and listened, and it was very proactive, and especially too on, on the KSC building and that property, because, you know, who knows, being proactive, looking at tomorrow versus just today, I think was a good thing. I have met with the Fire Station Study Committee, I'm going to their meeting again tomorrow. I had a great meeting yesterday with Brian Walsh for two hours. We may have to meet again on that ourselves to discuss some, some of these issues maybe more, have to get moved up. To that point, though, to what you brought up, Katie, about a January town meeting, that would help them a great deal as well versus in October, so I don't know what we have to do to start that, but I think a place mark for what we had discussed earlier, and this project as well, which is a very big project, that I think would be a good idea to have a January special as well. Just the last thing, on the, on the Youth Task Force, because there'll be an email coming either tomorrow or the next day to all of you from Emily. Michael and I have had three meetings in the past week. We met twice with the Youth Advocates Committee, Margaret Carrolls and Sarah Callahan, but we had a very productive meeting, which we called the other day, where we brought all our, our players in. School, school re, both school resource officers, Chief King came, Park and Rec Director, Paul DiManno came as well, who does programs, as well as both Sarah and...
Magda.
Magda from the library. And it was very, very enlightening in that the issue that Sarah and Will came to us with back in, is they really need some relief for fifty kids in the, in the spring. And so, I think, as I say, we put a lot on this, I think the greater, it was, the greatest thing we can do now is get something in place where we can start working towards an immediate relief in the fall, and that would involve us, the schools. Michael said he's willing to go up on this committee, the schools, the SROs, the library. It's really just some space that we need to find in transportation. So, I'm going to send you, there'll be an email coming out, because I want to bring this on for the twenty-fifth, where I want you to give some thought about two middle school parents to be on this committee. I don't know so much if we should be appointing the students, that was the only thing we didn't really talk about. We did talk about, though, two middle school parents, and we've already got some names already from prior discussions that have already submitted that they're interested. Two residents, and one bringing an expertise, a knowledge in, like, youth development, and another one with a knowledge of outreach in current trends in out-of-school time programming, things like that, social work. So, I know, Michael's already said he had someone in mind, if you could just start to reach out and think about someone. The two parents I really want, think they need to be, this is a, one of the things we definitely got from our personnel, this is a middle school issue. That the high school kids have so much stuff, short-term, like, and the other thing about it, the library, is it's not just a Pierce issue, it's the same area as the Hills kids as well. So, we want to bring all the players in and find something. These kids just want to have somewhere to go, relax, hang out, have something to eat, and somewhere to go Monday through Thursday, especially in the winter. Reverend Allen, next door, is, is working on a significant location as an alternative for kids in this town after school, but he won't be ready to go in September, he won't be ready till the end of the year. So, we've already kind of identified a couple of locations that we can use, but if you could, everyone could just think about that, and I'll have something coming shortly, definitely so that we can come on the twenty-fifth, to have some people ready. As I say, we've already got people that have been submitting names that want to be part of this. If you could just do that, that'd be really helpful, and I think we can really accomplish a lot this summer. I think Michael would agree with that, and I was very grateful, not just to the Youth Advocates, but especially to our personnel, who really brought some great insight as to day-to-day things with kids here in this town. It was really well worth it.
I will follow up by saying that Sarah Callahan and Margaret Carrolls came into my Department Head meeting today, just to basically touch the wall with, with all the department heads. Obviously, some of them won't have any role in this, but just to hear what, all the work that they've been doing, and they've put in a lot of time and effort, and they're, and they're really identifying things, places, people, and things to do. And hats off to them, they've done a great job, even since the two weeks they were sitting here, the work they've done. So, it's, it's a work in progress. I have no problem being on the task force to be a point person to the subject matter experts on, on the town side, and I think it's going to get faster quickly. Because the fall will be here before you know it, and things need to be in place well before that.
Richard, just so I'm clear, because there was a little confusion earlier, you talked about two middle school parents and two residents that have a background in youth development, so...
Right, and they could be middle school parents as well, but, so four...
Okay, that was my question, I didn't know if you meant two.
I meant four total. And I'll have it all spelled out. I still kind of, you know, one of the things that Chief King brought to Michael's attention, which I thank Michael for stuff, he brought up a good point, is that we're obviously investing money in this with our personnel who are assigned to this, and the department heads want to make sure that the direction of their personnel is coming from the town versus a volunteer. And I, and I get that, I got that part of it, so. Because this is going to take some time, and I, again, I know Mike, I know Maria Paul, Officer Maria Martin, and Chris Potts, Officer Chris Potts, very well. They do yeoman's work with the kids in this town. I don't think anyone has any idea, and as Michael heard firsthand, and everyone in that room heard in that. It's, life is not always, you know, white picket fences, and sometimes in the cases of these kids, they go to the lab because there's nowhere else to go, and they gave a very, you know, life isn't always any of these, but it was really very well taken, and I, and Paul and David, too, all in, you know, they were, they were very, like, whatever they could do to help this. So, I think we can help facilitate and coordinate this. I'll have this ready to go, I really want to do this by the twenty-fifth, have this ready to go if we can.
One last question, Mike, in your meeting today, did Sarah and Margaret present, or were they just there, you know, observing?
Yeah, they presented, we gave them ten or fifteen minutes at the beginning, there's some good questions that came from the audience. Yeah, so it was good, because I think the thing to stress is the timeline, right? And the need for, you know, they, they basically highlighted where they've been and what they've done and what they've seen. It was enlightening to sit down with the subject matters experts in the town and hear their, their version of day-to-day and what, what they see and what they know. It's, it's, it's making a strong case for short-term and long-term fixes.
And just as a follow-up to the long-term, the long-term is something that this group could take in a subcommittee, space needs, long-term. We're not sitting here today, I think all of us realizing, whether you've been here as long as Katie is, or even the newest members, you know, you're not going to build a multi-million dollar teen center tomorrow, but that doesn't negate the issue that Sarah and Will brought to us in January. And I think that we can make some really significant headway quickly to help them deal with that. I mean, the library's still good, we just want to give them some alternatives, and I think we can do that, and I really am confident that we can help them with this. It, not really a lot of money either, so I thank Michael for that. That's, that's all I have.
I, I need you to go back and clarify what you said.
Go ahead, go ahead.
About Chief King's point, can you just...
So, Chief King, he brought up a good point as far as the direction of, and I get this, is that, is that he's committing a lot of people to youth stuff, and so if he's going to do that, he wants to make sure that the direction of where they're going is coming from the town versus citizens. So, I got that, it was, it was, he brought up a good point, so I got that.
It's not that there would be bad intentions by the volunteers, but they still need to take their direction from the chief.
Right, absolutely, that's the proper way to do that, thank you.
And now, those, that's, those have been like, there's a history of, so he knew what he was talking about, and I accepted that. I didn't actually think of it, and, and one of the things, and I said this, Michael heard me, I was very clear, they're like, look, we're here to help, but we're not operational, we're not going out and, it's just not our role. And even for me, as the former chief, you hear me say three times, I mean, I'm like, I'm not the chief. I'm like, here to help you, whatever we can do to help facilitate this and give leadership and direction, and whatever we can do to, but we're not going to run the day-to-day to it, we want you to do it. There was no one there who wasn't willing to roll up this, so he's both on Sarah's side and on our side, so I'm happy about that. That's all I have. Vice Chair, I'll go to you first.
I, I think I've spoken enough tonight, so.
Wow.
So, I don't have anything.
I have two, but I still have things to say, especially since Lee Toma is still here. I got an email this week, and I have not been authorized to share the person's name, but I think it's worth...
You can give it anonymously.
Right, it's worth, it's worth mentioning, because I've, I've heard these concerns from a number of people about why we're not rece... about why we're not receiving some sort of revenue stream from the regional bike-sharing program. People have mentioned that bicyclists don't pay excise tax, and that they're worried about safety on the roads with bicycles. And I think that part of our educational efforts could go towards explaining how roads are paid for in Milton. I actually tried to piece that together, and I couldn't, just from the information on our website and the warrant, and it's complicated. So I think there, I think that there's some, some investigation on our part needed, and also some education, as well as looking into and letting people know about the effects of saving on pollution, and as well as the health benefits that accrue, not just to individuals, but to the community. And also explaining that revenue piece to people, I think, may be important. The other thing that someone brought to my attention was that our Quarry Hills lease will be coming up and going out for RFP, and that we, this person had an interesting idea, sort of like the creating our own utility for cable, but looking at creating our own nine-hole golf course and putting that out for RFP, at least using that as leverage, if nothing else. But also to be proactive and know what it is we're looking for as a town with that. And I wanted to report on the Grow Earth Garden project. We're getting closer to finding out who actually has purview over the piece of land, even though the town owns it. And looking at what the planning implications are, because it's near Glover School, and there are some issues with safety and transportation, so working on that.
So just to follow up and just give you on that, because this is something I dealt with a few years ago. I saw a picture, did that come from you, or did that come from them to you?
No, yeah, it came from Emily. That was from Grow Earth, the picture.
Are they, are they looking to use that entire piece of land?
I don't believe so. I think it's just the no-man's land that nobody's really entirely sure. It's like kind of a triangle piece at the bottom.
Okay, because I know that, Glenn, if you talk to Colin Pavelcheck, he had been in discussions, because Glover is squeezed really hard. And they had talked a little bit about possibly using some of that to gain some additional parking at Glover.
Right, and I think that that's, so it, there'll probably be a proposal to move the.
This project?
Right, the project, because of those issues, so, but.
That was the only thing, when I saw it, I'm like, wow, how big, I don't know, because it had the whole piece, and I knew that was the piece that the schools had been, and the town had been part of that discussion, so, the town side.
Right, well, once we find out exactly who to talk to, then we'll see what the story is on what's possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that it? Good? Okay.
Just briefly, I wanted to thank April Lamro for her creative suggestion. As you mentioned, Richard, on the Knights of Columbus, putting that idea forward and doing all the outreach she did to the neighborhood there. Because that's a, that's been a property that's been a concern for a long time. And it sounds like she's made contact with the owner and is trying to move that forward. So, good work for April. And also to thank Cheryl Tagayus, who's the chair of the Planning Board, but also the Master Plan Implementation Committee. She's, she's done most of the work, and whether people agree or disagree with the current state of the project, she really has, Cheryl has put in an awful lot of hours and an awful, an awful lot of time and effort. And she brings her background as an architect to it that, you know, others like me on the committee don't bring. So, I just wanted to publicly thank her also for everything she's done to date on the Milton Village project, even acknowledging that there's still a lot, a lot of road to be traveled on that project. Both Cheryl and April gave, I thought, very good presentations last Thursday evening.
On our behalf though, you've, you have done a lot of work there.
The committee has done, but it's a committee effort.
I've been here watching.
But Cheryl, I think Cheryl deserves, she's done the laboring work, so to speak, of the work, so.
I am, I can say this, in the, we've had, she and I have had several meetings already, just since we've both become chair. And I, I am very impressed with just how visionary she is. She's very bright and very insightful, and gives a lot of, so. Thank you all. Tony?
I have one thing to add. I would like to congratulate former Firespace Needs Committee member Brian Tuie for winning the Milton Who's-a-Club 2018 NIE Cup. Congratulations, Brian.
He beat you?
He beat us. He hit a hundred and thirty-five hybrid to about ten inches.
And I have one other item, Richard. We can follow formal procedure and wait for future agenda items, or I could bring it up now.
What is it? Go ahead.
So, there was an accident today, the intersection of school and Cantinav. And I've heard from several people who were very interested in exploring about making that a four-way stop. Currently, there's a stop sign at school, but there's no stop sign on Cantinav. And if you can envision that intersection.
So if my memory's correct, just the top of my head, so Cantinav, the downhill grade.
Yes.
Would preclude it from meeting the mass traffic law.
Okay.
Because you have to be able to stop three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So, if you, this is applicable in many locations in Milton. So on the downhill grade, snow or ice, even if you hadn't treated it, negates the possibility. You have to be able to stop with no, I know that that's been one before, but I do, it's the downgrade from Cantinav that is the, is the problem.
Okay, so it's been looked into before, and there's a reason that there's one, that there is not one there, is what you're trying to say.
Yeah, because school, so school, as you come across school, it's level grade on both sides. As you come up on Cantinav, it's level grade. Coming down Cantinav is an incline, and that's the, that's the. Give you a simple analogy just quick, if you go on Highland Street. So Highland Street, the proposal, one of the first things they did when I was chair, was one of the first proposals we brought to the Board of Selectmen, it was approved. Highland Street was proposed to put stop signs at Clifton, Buckingham, Martin, and Spaffett. Two got it and two didn't. And the two that didn't get it was because of the downhill incline coming from the top of, that could not pass. Every single stop sign has to pass what's called the mass unify. It's a very rigorous regulation to pass, it's very hard. It was IOPA for me when I first got on the job.
So there's no stop sign at Clifton coming down from Highland, is what, and then?
There's a downhill grade that takes it away. So I.
Scratch that, okay.
Okay.
Strike that from the record.
That's okay. Anything else? Would have to, I was going to refer to the traffic commission anyway, so, because that's where it would have to go, so. Anything else?
For future agenda items, so following up on Melinda's point, should she and I give any comments we have on the Finance Committee charge? How should we, should we bring those to the next meeting? Or, I know Mike drafted it, or should we forward it them to Mike?
You've got it already drafted?
Well, Mike did a draft, a couple of meetings prior to one of our previous meetings.
I'm happy to take the comments and do a markup, if that's, if that's useful.
Okay. Okay, great.
Anything else?
If we're on future agenda items, I just have two that I've mentioned before, but I just think that they're important, sooner or later. One is, back in March, there was a presentation about an article for town meeting to alter the name of this board to a more gender-neutral name. And I'd like to have that considered, because of the time it was deferred for this board, for possible consideration for October town meeting. So I'd like to have that on the agenda, if we could. And if we do, I would probably present the reasons why I think it should be considered by town meeting. And then the second thing is something that comes up over and over and over again, and came up once again at the Planning Board meeting last week, and that is the problem of traffic. And that we do, in my judgment, need a traffic mitigation committee to look at the holistic view of this town. And so I'd like to make a presentation on that at the next meeting.
So.
Or at the next possible meeting.
All right, I'm fine with that. So the only I would suggest to you, just to give you some background on that, I would, if you haven't done it already, I'd have conversation, not so, Chase just got here, but definitely John Thompson, Bill Clark, and probably Chief King.
And I've spoken with, yeah, the chief, and, yeah.
And even Chief King was only in it for, boy, did he luck out. He was only in it for a short time. Okay, I'm fine with that. And you just let me know, and I'll schedule whenever you're ready. Anything else? Do we, I just, I just want to make a mention on, just on a citizen speak response to Mr. Collins's remarks tonight. He, you know, when he, he brought up the point of the mission statement. I think in 1992, when the town had a huge management study done of the police department by a group out of DC, I think that was one of the first things they recommended on the mission statement, sits right. And I'm sure there are other departments, I'm sure the fire department has a mission statement. Maybe, I'd welcome any of your comments, and then I'd be willing to maybe put on the agenda and see what, how you feel on that. Would that be okay? And I'm saying we don't have to do it unless it has to be right away, I just. He is correct in that, like, I couldn't envision running an apartment without having a mission statement. Maybe we should have a town-wide mission statement, I don't, but let's think about it. And I'd, I'll be, I'll welcome any comments.
I had a, I mean, I guess we could ask town council if he's the right one. I don't know if any other town has a mission statement, but, I mean, what he presented sounded reasonable, cost efficiency. You know, we all are for that. I just, I'm, that was, I was just curious whether, you know, whether a town can have a mission statement. Do other towns have one?
The question is whether you can codify something that we try to do every day.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Right. But missions, the best mission statements I've ever seen, they're simple, they're just like, you know, two cents, you know, they're just, they're kind of like catch-all. The only, the only other point I want to make, I don't know where the sixty million, I get his point on the sixty million on the fire station, where did that number come from?
I believe it's in the capital plan.
Is a place mark?
It's an estimate for the fiery end of the deputy.
Right, right, it's an estimate for those two things.
I think he has some, because just in the short discussions I'm already having with the chair of the fire, I just, I think there's some really smart things, not even going where Mr. Collins is going tonight, but I think that we could do well here.
The DPW number, I believe, came from the DPW Study Committee. And they created, it was a couple of years ago, created a proposal. And I believe that's where that number came from.
Yeah, I can forward that to you.
So it's thirty million?
Tom Hurley has a nice presentation on that as well.
Thirty-five million?
Forty-five, yeah, yeah.
That's the committee headed up by Stan Janiga. So they had a report, but we must have a report that we can forward to everybody.
Yeah, I do, I'll forward it.
Okay.
Well, and I think if I understand the subtext, it is to vote this in through town meeting.
The mission, the mission statement? I don't know if you'd have to do that, would you? I don't, that'd be a good question for town council.
Yeah, that, that's what, since we're asking, I think we should also ask that. And, and even if it's not required, it may be desirable in order to raise the level of awareness and sort of, you know, to that. I mean, it is the legislative body that is charged with appropriating funds, so.
I think, I think if we're talking about the mechanics, it would probably be something that would go on the bylaws.
The mission statement.
Yeah, if it, if you wanted to do it, if you wanted to codify it, that's probably where it would go, I imagine. Which would require town.
To the school.
I mean, that's where, that's where organizations put their mission statements, they go in the bylaws.
When you open the general bylaw, the general, the rules and regulations, which was approved by this board of the, of the Milton Police Department, page one, the mission statement. It's right there as soon as you open it. You walk in the front door, it's on the wall as soon as you walk in the police station.
Right.
Schools do or don't.
Schools have a, have a policy, I believe. I believe the schools have a policy about what their.
Mission is?
Mission is. I believe there's a policy to that effect.
May I ask one more question?
Sure.
The four acres on the town farm, do we have a target date to be talking about that?
So, we're not like Governor Stotan, we're not in a, can we talk about that at all?
But I think we should schedule, we've talked about scheduling a Governor Stotan meeting and inviting, say, the Affordable Housing Trustees.
So that's I'm gonna ask, I'm going with you to your first meeting Wednesday, so I'm gonna invite them.
Okay.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Two, two.
Well, I've suggested, and I haven't talked to him, but I've suggested we should consider inviting former Selectman Tom Hurley.
I got that, I'm fine with that.
Who has a lot of knowledge about historic tax credits and those sorts of issues that may be helpful.
I do think though, and you were there with me, Melinda, on the tour that we had mass housing partnership. I think that, and I think I've been, I've had shared several discussions and emails with Mr. Cronin about this. And I think those buildings have just degraded so much that the cost of, from what they were telling us just from looking, it'd be really difficult, which is a shame, but, but there are alternatives. They gave us, I was very impressed, and there's some great people, Kathleen O'Donnell, another one, some great vision, great ideas. And I'm with you, Katie, I think we should, the time is now, Pulte's on its way, let's just, the dog pound's gonna be moving, so let's get it going, so. So, I'll do that Wednesday night when we meet, because that'll be my, I'm gonna introduce Melinda, and then I'm gonna walk away, unless I have to come back. Okay?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Motion adjourned. So moved. Thank you all. Thank you.